I will call the order to the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting for February the 4th. Ms. Gonzalez, will you do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Romero?
Here.
Commissioner Pollard?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Chairman Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Durham?
Here.
Commissioner DeBae?
Here.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there any changes or additions or deletions that the town has? Or any commissioners have any questions on the agenda?
Do you want to do your pledge?
Thanks. Oh, I'm going to do that. Thank you. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, DeBae. Next, well, if there is no changes to the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it reflect that the agenda was approved as submitted. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We do have two minutes to look at. First, the July 2nd, 2014 amended planning and zoning meeting minutes. From our last meeting, there were some concerns or some issues in reference to, at that time, the commission was different than it's sitting now, and most of, or part of the members weren't present for those minutes. In the package, if you look at it, it does reflect that one member that's not here anymore did approve or agreed with the minutes that were stated there. Mr. Romero, who is here, indicated the same as well. Mr. Patterson, I believe, at that time, when you were on the commission, you were part of that, those minutes as well. So, I'm not sure if there's any changes. The only one that's really here is Billy and, Mr. Romero and Mr. Patterson from that meeting. So I don't know if one wants to make a motion and the other seconded to approve it, or if they have changes or comments.
I have no changes. I'll make a motion to approve the amended P&amp;Z minutes from July 2nd, 2014.
You can all second. There's a first and second. I believe, because this is a little unique, I think you need to take a roll call of the vote of those minutes.
Okay, yes, and because the other two did, or two did respond, and I attached it to the minutes, then I think what Matt said was that you guys can vote on it after, so. Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollard?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Comis-, or Chairman Garcia?
Again, I'll abstain because I wasn't present for that meeting.
Commissioner Durham?
Abstain.
Commissioner DeBae?
Abstaining.
And Commissioner Lucero?
Abstaining. I wasn't here either.
And I believe we have correspondence from Justin Lee, who was on the commission at the time, and so consequently, I believe that is a quorum for that particular meeting, so.
Yes, that was three yeses out of the four that were in attendance on that day.
That's correct. So it passes.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the January 7th planning and zoning meeting minutes. Do any of the commissioners have any corrections or comments in reference to those minutes?
None, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
There's a second?
Second.
There's a first and second. All those, an approval of these minutes, signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is we have a citizens forum, and we do allow people from the public, if they would like to come up to the podium and speak about any planning and zoning issues, I will let you know if it's dealing with the case number that we'll be looking at thereafter, if you wait till then, we'll allow individuals to speak at that time. But if there's any other individuals that want to speak about other issues, please come forward. Well, let me ask, Ms. Gonzalez, will you check to see who has put their name down to speak?
Are you going to speak on the case, or?
Yes.
Okay, so then it's, you're going to stress the citizens forum, or?
I'm wondering, I don't know if I should say it.
Okay. Okay, I think, I'm not sure who's here. There's several people signed up, but I think some are here to speak on the case. So, is, I guess, I'm not sure which.
Well, let me do this. Raise your hand if you want to speak about another issue besides what we're going to discuss. Okay, there's two individuals here. If one of you want to come up, state your name. Just so you know, there's no action taken, we're just going to listen to your concerns or comments or issues out there.
You can either hear or up there, whatever is easier.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Mr. Chairman and commission members, my name is Ken Manning. I live in Taos. About three years ago, I was involved in putting together the appeal on the special use permit for the proposed family dollar when they were wanting to locate next door to Orlando's. Standing room only crowd, county commissioners meeting, commissioners rejected that special use permit, said it was incompatible. At almost identically the same time, Dollar General was breaking ground on the south side. Within the town limits, zoning was in place. There was no notice in newspaper, there was no requirement for any kind of public hearing, no opportunity for any kind of public comment or involvement. Building permit was pulled, construction began. No P&amp;Z review, no council review. Personally, I find the Dollar General now being the entryway to Taos in the south to be offensive. We've got a 125-foot-long blank wall. That's what people come in and see after they get past Rancho San Luis Church. I'm on zero architectural character that reflects what this community is about, in my opinion. Not one stick of landscaping on the south side of the building to break up that 125 feet. So this has kind of piqued my curiosity, since the community got outraged about the Family Dollar on the north side. What does the town have in place in terms of architectural standards that say new commercial development is going to be in keeping with the character of the community? Well, I passed out. Section 16.20.030 clearly states, any new construction in C1, C2, or HCPD has to comply with these design standards. Virtually all of the PSL and Kit Carson are zoned in one of those three categories. So virtually any new development should have to comply. Well, evidently, staff concluded that that design, or a lack thereof, complied with the architectural design standards. Otherwise, no building permit could have been issued. So I started wondering, okay, what other fairly recent developments have gone through this kind of process, and what did we end up with? Well, it wasn't all that long ago that Applebee's got constructed. Did a great job of reflecting local character and architectural standards. Walgreens didn't do that bad a job, not as good as Applebee's, but passable. Aaron's, mm, kind of poor. Dollar General, pathetic. How can we have such wildly divergent results from the same set of architectural standards? I don't get it. Couple of possibilities jump to mind. One, maybe our standards are so general, so vague, that staff doesn't really have the kind of guidance that we thought were probably being provided by the statute that's on the books. If that's the case, then those standards presumably need to be tightened up. Maybe there needs to be more mandatory requirements, as you've got in the historic district. One possibility. Another possibility of how this is coming to pass is the standards that are on the books are really pretty good. But, application of those standards totally at the whim of the quote code administrator, or whoever issues building permits, what side of the bed they get up on that day? What's their overall philosophy? Maybe total staff discretion on something this important is not such a great idea. If you conclude that that is the nature of the problem, then maybe we need to talk about some procedural changes. Maybe the P&amp;Z should sign off on site plans and architectural design guidelines for any new permit. Maybe there should be some public input. Or a lighter touch, maybe any new development should be signed by a licensed architect in the state of New Mexico that explains in detail exactly how they met every point of the guidelines. I'm sure there's other ways to approach this, those were just some things that came to mind, but I don't see how we can say that the system as it's currently working is anything but broken. Something needs to be focused on, in my opinion. I would assume that's the P&amp;Z's role, to help define what the issue, what the problem is, and think about how it should be approached, how it should be fixed. The goal, in my view, no more Dollar Generals, period. That kind of image of this community, I just can't, can't fathom. I would just hope the P&amp;Z is willing to put this topic on your next agenda, have a discussion, maybe take some action as to plotting a path forward, and wrestle with this. It's not easy or simple, but I think something needs to be looked at. I think if you feel a need to touch base with council, I've made some similar comments to them, got a positive response, I think, from them, so I don't think you're going to hit a roadblock if you touch base there. I thank you for your time. Be happy to answer any questions or comments you've got.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. What I would recommend for you do is to reach out to the town and see if we can put this on the agenda, if it's, and have a dialogue back and forth. This is just a forum, we listened to what you had to say, you bring up some good points, but to go through the process so we can all engage, needs to be placed on the agenda. So you might talk to the town and see, you know, some of these issues, if they can be placed on the next month's agenda, and we can have a bigger dialogue in how we can address some of these concerns and issues.
So that's not y'all's purview, to put things on the agenda?
Um, yes and no, it's, but I think the first approach is to go to the town, bring that up. We do have the information that you've just supplied to us. I will follow up with the, with the town and have a discussion about the possibilities of doing that, but for the most part, most things, the town does place the agenda together with, basically checking with the commission if they have issues they would like to place on the agenda as well, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I might, I noticed Councilman Han is in the audience, and just two months ago, during a workshop session with planning and zoning and the Historic Preservation Commission, Councilman Han raised this very point with the commissioners in a workshop atmosphere, and maybe if he'd like to say a few words to bring us up to date, if there's anything to bring us up to date on? If so pleases.
Could I add to that statement? There seemed to be interest from both the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission to follow up with design guidelines, and I think we're waiting for some sort of structure or discipline suggested either by, we certainly don't want to act without town authority, but I think there's interest on both the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission to take a look at the procedure and the standards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. We addressed this issue about a month ago, as I recall, and Councilman Gonzalez was going to look into exactly what transpired with the Dollar General down on the south side of town. At last check, we hadn't heard back from Councilman Gonzalez. So I think, from my perspective, what might be useful is a joint meeting, I'm just trying to think outside of the box here, maybe with P&amp;Z, Historic Preservation, and council to just kind of wrestle with this. I believe it's under your purview to put anything on the agenda, although you're not supposed to take action tonight, but perhaps, Mr. Chair, you could check with Rick and get this on for a discussion item, and then per your direction, if you wish for council representation to be there, I'm happy to be there, I'm sure other consuls would be, so that we can kind of discuss this in an open forum.
Well, again, there's no action being taken right now, and we could certainly, or I could certainly reach out to him and indicate that we had some people interested in this topic, and see what we can do, either put it on the agenda or work out some kind of situation.
Thank you. Okay.
Just for clarification, for my benefit, when you say "town," are you looking for direction from the mayor's office, from the town manager? I wasn't clear on, from the town, what, exactly what you meant.
Well, there, we're the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we work directly with the interim, which is Rick Bellis, in reference to that department. So that's why we'll be reaching out to him.
Okay.
Okay? If it was someone in the position, we'd be reaching out to that gentleman, so.
Okay.
So we'll do that, okay? Thank you, thank you for your comments, okay? Is there any one else that has any comments in reference to any other issue? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess and reach out to the town one more time.
Can I just say a little bit?
Yes.
My name is Lawrence Baker, and Ken and I work on this in both the county and the city. Let me understand something. Are you aware of what's going on here with how ugly we look? Are you, are you in agreement with the fact that something should be done? We don't want to spin our wheels.
Well, no, I mean, you know, we certainly listen to any, any issues in reference to the public bringing to the forefront here, but we can't act on it at this point, and I can't poll the people, the commission at this time, because it's not an action item. We will follow up and see what we can do to address the issue and bring it up to some type of forum or commission meeting, so that's what we'll do.
Well, I will tell you that when we were getting signatures for the petition for the Family Dollar, almost to a man or a woman, they said, "Why is Dollar General going up? How did, you know, here we are fighting Family Dollar, which was in the county at the time, how did Dollar General get through?" So there is a lot of support for not putting up any more ugly buildings like Dollar General and Aaron's. So I hope that you will listen to the populace, because it's not just us, I think it's really far and wide. This is a real economic issue. I'll give you just two instances recently. A travel writer, which you may have read from the LA Times, I don't know whether that article was disseminated, he came here to do a story primarily on the earth ships, but he had to come in through the south side, and he writes in the very first upfront part of his article what he saw. The fast food joints, you know, ugly gas stations, I mean, he mentions all of that. Then there was another travel writer who didn't even get that far. He came up from Santa Fe, he got halfway up Pueblo Sur and said, "I'm not writing about this place." He turned around and went back. Now, this ought to alarm you guys. It alarms me.
Thank you very much. The five minutes have elapsed, and I appreciate it, and I understand it's a big issue that needs to be addressed, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, as I mentioned, I would like to take a five-minute recess, and then at that point, hopefully, we have representation from the town to speak in behalf of this issue. So, do we have to get a motion? So we'll be taking a five-minute break.
Here's Rick right now.
From our five-minute recess, next item on the agenda is the continuation of the appeal to case number PZB 2014-35. Appeal filed by Arminio Martinez and Amy Romero, property owners at 404 Mora Lane. The appellant's are requesting the Planning and Zoning Commission to reverse the decision of the code administrator and grant a home occupation permit to the homeowners for the property located in our four zone, and is located within the town limits of the town, of the town of Taos. I do want to mention, because of the appeal process, and depending what decision is made and parties involved, that there is a next level of appeal, if need be, that we do state that there are no council members in the room, because it would go to that next step if need be. So what I'm going to do at this point is have the town and the code enforcer, which is temporary Rick Bellis at this time, to present the decision to deny the permit, and then we will then have the party involved speak, and then we'll have people from the audience speak in reference to one side or the other. So, Mr. Bellis, if you'd like to present the case?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, if you might also note for the record that the mayor of the town is also not present.
And the mayor is also not present at this, at this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bellis, town manager, serving as acting director of planning, community, and economic development, also as the, serving as the code official in regards to the denial, and I believe that rather than going through a lengthy history, if I could just read into the record the November 24th letter of determination denying the home use occupation, I believe that it summarizes the history and the conditions rather succinctly. This is in regard to a letter to Arminio Martinez, 404 Mora Lane, POVAC, 1831 Taos, New Mexico. Request for administrative approval of a conditional use for a home occupation. Mr. Martinez, the town planning department has thoroughly reviewed the home occupation business registration application you submitted to the planning and zoning and buildings department on October 9th, 2014, for the 404 Mora Lane home. I'd like to explain the delay in providing you with the decision, that the decision was delayed by waiting for required proof of notification of adjacent property owners to be returned to our offices by yourself. At this time, your request for an administrative approval of a conditional use for a home occupation at the premises of 404 Mora Lane has been denied. The specific reasons for that determination are as follows. One, the Town of Taos land use and zoning regulations specify that you must physically reside in the home for which you are requesting a home occupation permit for at least one month or more prior to an application being considered. You cannot legally occupy the home without a certificate of occupancy. Currently, you have an open building permit, and you have requested no building inspections. The town therefore cannot issue an administrative approval of your home occupation request, since this initial eligibility requirement of occupancy has not been met. Two, on September 18th, 2014, your building project was red-tagged, and a stop-work order was placed for doing construction without obtaining a building permit prior to initiating the substantial remodeling and alteration of the residence. Both the town building official and I separately inspected the home and found extensive remodeling, including replacement of the hydronic heating system, which is HVAC, and toilets and sinks, which is plumbing, and electrical wiring and fixtures, electrical, each of which fall under the jurisdiction of the New Mexico Construction Industries Department, NMCID, and require a local building permit, as well as state-approved plans prior to work being started, and progress and final inspections by NMCID before the town can conduct a final inspection and issue ACO. Additionally, we observed other remodeling requiring a Town of Taos building permit and possibly approved construction drawings prior to the work being started. The work must be carried out by a New Mexico licensed general contractor with a GBA, GB98 license. While you subsequently applied for and have since been issued a town building permit, neither the Taos, Planning, Zoning, and Buildings Department, or NMCID, has heard from you since then concerning either progress or final inspections for any of the work you are doing. If work is completed in a manner that cannot readily be inspected by the town building official, such as wiring and plumbing behind sealed walls, the town cannot certify that work meets the required code. You may subsequently be required to have a New Mexico licensed electrician, plumber, and architect or structural engineer certify the work before it can be approved. Three, subsequent site visits during the day and late evening hours by town staff have observed that the residence is in fact being occupied by a person or persons whom we believe to be based on earlier representations by yourself to be your daughter. You had previously requested permission to have furniture and personal belongings of your daughters moved into, stored at the residence, and that request was approved with the understanding that the unit could not be occupied until all work was completed, inspected, and ACO was issued by the town. Therefore, you are in violation of the clearly posted red tags on the front office and the residence. Four, on September 18th, 2014, an inspection of your property disclosed that you had converted a residential garage into commercial offices for the operation of a proposed business with separate entrance without town zoning approval or business registration. Five, in several meetings, including a site visit performed by town staff with you to the proposed location of the business, you denied statements by neighbors that business was not already being conducted from the home, and that no clients would be visiting the site, stating that all business with clients would be conducted off-site at the county detention center. Subsequent observation by town staff found this statement to be false, including a visit that occurred during our joint inspection with you and your realtor. You were directed and agreed that no further business would be conducted from the residence until all outstanding matters were resolved. A subsequent inspection on multiple occasions by town staff has indicated that multiple vehicles had been arriving at the residence at various hours to conduct what appears to be a business activity, and numerous complaints from neighbors have alleged the same thing. You have therefore continued to violate the stop-work order and red tag prohibiting any occupation of the residence. any occupation of the residence and/or conducting any business from the location. Six, in contradiction to the above statements and with town approval for conducting a business, without town approval for conducting a business from the premises, you engaged in clearing an area on the property directly behind and to the south of yours for parking, constructed a walkbridge from your property south over the Rio Fernando River onto a property you do not own to facilitate walking traffic and vehicular traffic from the detention center and the community in general for your, for purposes of your business. The Rio Fernando is a federal emergency management agency, FEMA, determined floodplain and listed by the U.S. Department of the Interior and Army Corps of Engineers as waters of the U.S., requiring notification to and approval from the Corps before any structure within and/or across the floodplain can be constructed, as well as a FEMA-authorized floodplain determination. You have completed this work without either notification to or the permission of either governmental entity, and are in violation of not having a floodplain certification from the town or county or a section 404 determination letter, which is a municipal, county, and federal violation. Number seven, covenants of Casitas de Rio, Del Rio subdivision, which you agreed to in the assumption of the deed for the subject property, state that the lots are to be used for residential purposes only. Number eight, on September 18th, 2014, you were red-tagged for doing business at every home at 404 Morale Lane without the proper home occupation/business registration. The prior issues outlined here prevent the town from issuing a business license for this location. It is also unclear at this time as to whether you are the owner of the business that appears on your current registration, and additional information may be required to clarify this issue. Summary of findings. Under the current land use and building regulations, the Town of Taos is unable to issue a certificate of occupancy or zoning approval for the conditional use of the dwelling for a home occupation. Additionally, without the above approvals, the town is unable to issue a business registration to you at that location. The town's land use regulations allow the town to, in quotes, "conditionally approve home occupation or businesses" by placing certain conditions or restrictions on the granting of the use, such as restrictions on parking and hours of operation in order to minimize disruption to the neighborhood and to ensure that the activity is consistent with the general nature of the adjacent properties and the intended neighborhood zoning. Our regular tourary review and field observations have concluded that the proposed activity is not consistent with the general character of the neighborhood and purposes of the current zoning. It is the conclusion of this office that the way the premises is being methodically developed and used by the applicant and his agents to date, as evidenced by the renovations, selection of location, and the traffic that is being generated both onsite and offsite, as well as its documentable impact on the surrounding neighborhood even during its development, that this use is not consistent with augmenting the base residential activity with a secondary and incidental home occupation, but is instead indicative of an intentional plan for a predominant commercial use at that site, use selected for its proximity to the county detention center, where the residential use is secondary and only contemplated for its basis as a justification for circumventing the intact zoning. Further, it is the conclusion of this office that, given the track record of the applicant to date as regards this property, that there is serious and justifiable concern as to whether any conditions placed on the approval, no matter how specific, would be complied with. The project has already placed an unreasonable and disproportionate burden on the resources of the building, planning, and legal departments of the town, and has yet to result in a single instance of compliance other than obtaining the building permit after the fact. As a result of these findings, and the applicant's continued refusal to comply with the town land use regulations, the town and state building code, and multiple notices of violation or NOVs served on the owner and posted on the property as of November 24, 2014, the town is directing that all activity on your property located at 404 Morale Lane, including construction, business activity, and residential occupancy, cease effective immediately. You must cease all operations of any kind at that location. You may not occupy this residence for any reason until all unresolved matters are addressed. If you fail to comply with this final notice, your case will be referred to the town attorney and NMCID for prosecution, which may include a fine up to $300 per day for violation of noncompliance and up to 90 days in jail for the building code violations, and $500 per day and up to 90 days in jail for the business license violation. Additionally, under the ICC Building Code, the building official in the town may seek condemnation of the property for illegal construction. You have the right to appeal the decision in writing to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission of the code administrator's denial of your application for home occupancy and business registration. Citation for failure to obtain a building permit may be appealed to the town's designated construction board of appeals. A copy of the appeals procedure and application timeframes is attached for your benefit. If you have any questions about this letter or the appeals process, please feel free to contact our offices. Signed by myself, copied to the building official, the planning department, staff, and the town attorney. There is a affidavit included, as well as pictures, subsequent to this that show, based on inspections by myself and other town employees, and is evidenced by the traffic that the continued occupancy of the property continued to this day.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. What I would like to do with the commissioner's agreement is have the other party speak to their appeal, and then at that point, listen to individuals that would like to speak, and then we can ask questions to the town and to the individual in reference to the issues unless someone wants to make some comments to that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might ask a question before we get into that. The, I want to clear up the question about the validity of the appeal, if I can. The appeal notice that has come in our package, the appellant says that the decision is incorrect and wrong at every level, quote-unquote. The code, however, requires that that written notice that appeals states specifically each and every decision from which the appeal is taken. Do you believe we have a valid appeal in front of us?
I believe that it does not satisfy the criteria for an appeal, and that was reflected to, by staff, to the property owner, however, he indicated, "Well, that's my appeal." Has the fee been paid yet?
No.
In addition, the fee has not been paid for the appeal.
I would direct the question then to the town attorney. Based on what you've just heard, do you believe we have a valid appeal to hear tonight?
If I may just have a moment. I'm sorry if you'll bear with me a moment. We're trying to find the appropriate sections of the code for your information.
I have a reference as 16.12.080.3B.
and it says, A, says all appeals should be initiated by filing a written notice of appeal with the code administrator on a form, the contents of which have been approved by the code administrator, and accompanied by the fee established pursuant to Appendix A attached to Ordinance 99-5, which is the fee schedule which Ms. Gonzalez is presently looking for. B says a written notice of appeal should state specifically each and every decision from which an appeal is taken. I believe it's been within your discretion as the commission to decide whether those conditions have been met. If you find that the conditions have not been met, as stated forth in the ordinance, then you can make findings of fact with regard to each of those, whether they have or they haven't, and then your ruling should be pursuant to those findings.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just following that up, then, if, I'm pleased to proceed, if that's the choice of the commission to do so, I would just ask, however, that since we don't know specifically what it is the appellant is objecting to here or is appealing, I want to be really careful that we aren't just wandering all over the place, that we know what it is we're supposed to be considering here about this appeal.
Is it my turn?
Any comments from the commission in reference to?
I would just, if I may add, that I was really disappointed with the appeal application. The application was an opportunity to address the concerns raised by the town, and rather than have a legitimate professional response, the response was, "The town got it wrong on all levels." And that kind of set me off, to be honest with you. That was an opportunity to present your side of the situation. And I'm frustrated with the application. If the commission wants to move forward and say the application's complete, I'll agree to that, but I don't feel personally that the application was complete.
Mr. Chair, even looking at the town, though, there was no reference to any code or section violations or anything other than specific as to the, they were red-tagged for certain things, but there was no, nothing that, nothing that referenced anything off of the UBC code or anything like that. So even for us to look at, how would we know what violations were in place as a commission? And I looked through the packet, and I couldn't find anything like that either, other than the fact that construction without a permit or electrical, as we heard in the letter now, but nothing referenced code.
Any other comments?
I would have to comment with that also, Chairman, that I believe that we need to get more information from the town regarding the violations that did in fact occur or didn't occur, and then any response from the appellant so that we can have that information so that we can make a justified decision here, because at this point, it's kind of, we're winging it, so.
Mr. Chair, if I might, Commissioner Lucero, I think that's my point about the specificity that's lacking. I think the code requires the specificity from the appellant. They are appealing a decision made by our code administrator. They should be telling us why. What is it about that decision that they got that they're appealing? We shouldn't have to start all over, I don't believe, with the code administrator first here as to why this decision was made.
I think it's important that we know which codes were violated, first off, so that we can look at those codes and then get into it further. And I think that it's kind of vague, even though, you know, the decision was denied by the administrator, but nonetheless, they have to specify a little bit more, and then the appellant needs to specify what things they want to appeal.
I agree with Commissioner Lucero there. I work in an industry that works closely with codes and so forth, and every time that we're issued a correction or anything, it's referenced by code so we know specifically what is wrong. And I'm, you know, I think the town should have been more clear expert code as to what was, what was being violated. And that way, it would make our job a lot easier when it came down to knowing what sections were violated and so forth. All we've got in front of us also is a very vague decision on the town's part, and how can the applicant reference certain code violations if they weren't, if they weren't supplied to us? I don't know. I'm not sure they were given to him also.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero. I do want to state something here. Unfortunately, and I wish this would have been brought up before we heard a presentation from the town, why the decision was made, before we're talking about this. We've heard one side. I believe we should allow the party to speak as well. Now, as a decision, as a commission, we can, if we need to table this because we feel that there's certain lack of information, or we can make a decision. But, and I'm just one commissioner here, but I feel that since we allowed the town to basically present their case of their justification while certain commissioners have some concerns that it does not state certain regulations or violations there, we should let the appellant speak in behalf and have, see what he has to say. Though probably the best process that should have been done was to address these, each of these items in writing so we can have a better understanding, the thinking behind the whole process. But again, I'm just one commissioner saying that I think we need to listen to the other side since we've gone this far.
I agree. I think we should listen to the other side, and I guess that's where I was going with this, is that we should allow him to speak also.
Any other comments, or do we need to vote on that?
I think what you're suggesting is that you feel that the appeal is not defective, that the appeal should go forward. And as Attorney Lopez pointed out, then, I believe that's up to the commission to decide whether or not this appeal is defective or not. And if you find it not defective, it should go forward. I don't have any objection to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point out? Looks on the surface, it looks defective, and I'm just asking for clarification.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
As a point of clarification, I could point out that the, excuse me, the actual applicable laws are identified on 197 and continue through the 190s, and then additionally, on page 68, the home occupation definitions are included. The business registration is also included. Those actual excerpts of the code were also attached to the notice of violations, as well as the letter that I just read you, and were presented both in person, handed to and as attested to by sworn law enforcement officer, Lieutenant Maggio, and myself, as well as sent by certified mail to both addresses, both the post office box of business and the residence address at 404 Morale Lane.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner, perhaps.
It seems like the, if it was about determining whether or not it was a valid appeal should have been something that was done by staff prior to placing it on the agenda? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, and was the, so we had, we had two conditions there. One, it should have been, the appeal should address the determination point by point as per each violation, and then there's a fee to pay in order to appeal. Is that correct from staff?
Yes.
And was, has the fee been paid for the appeal?
No.
So if it wasn't a complete application to appeal the decision, then it shouldn't have been placed on the agenda to be heard again?
The item was placed on the agenda as a courtesy to the appellant. This was a rather contentious case that a lot of the neighborhood and the appellant had strong feelings about, with the understanding that the fee would be paid and some of these other issues would be taken care of. It had already been polled once because we had not received proof of mailing, and so based on the assurance of the applicant that these other issues would be taken care of, we did schedule the matter to be heard. If you are asking for a determination from us as to whether we feel the application at this time, as of this moment, has been completed and deemed complete? at this time, as of this moment, has been completed and deemed complete, it obviously isn't. There are people here to testify if you choose to, for their convenience, to not have to come back. And you feel that without having the points iterated by the appellant as to what it is he's objecting to, that you can still hear the matter. You could still find at the end of this that you deny it based on the condition that the appeals application was not complete, and state that as the condition.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This has gone on and on and on for months, and it is a contentious thing. I am curious if Mr. Martinez was given the same information that we were, because I have in my hand, with all the numbers of the rulings, and if Mr. Martinez had that, then he would have been able to fill out a complete appeal. He chose not to. I definitely agree that we need to hear the people that are here. I hate to see it go on and on and on. And after we have made our decision, it goes to the city council. So that's more weeks and months. I feel like if he has this information that I have, that came in the packet that all of us have, then he could have made a complete appeal, if that was spelled out to him.
Well, just to add additional comments to this, I think we're broken, and the procedural process was not followed. It shouldn't have been on the agenda, because he has not fulfilled what is required to go through an appeals process. But saying that, again, it was placed on the agenda as an action item. We have parties here that would like to speak to it, and I believe we need to go forward with this. I agree with Ms. DeBay that this has gone on. It's been dealt with since last year, and we placed it on... We tabled it last meeting, and I think we need to at least listen to the people that are here, and then the commission can make a decision, what they want to do going forward at that point. Though, I agree that the appeal procedures and process, there are areas of concern of how it was handled. But we're here now, and I think we need to go forward with it. I don't know what the rest of you feel about that, but I... Mr. Pollard, I understand what you brought up, and it's a valid point, but I think we need to go forward with this. I don't know what the rest of the commission, if you want to go forward with this?
I'd like to make the motion that we have the public hearing that's on the agenda.
I don't think it's an action item, because it's not on the agenda, and I don't... We're just pulling ourselves to see if we're all in agreement with that, unless somebody wants to make a motion for... But we're going to go ahead and hear comments after we get to second, so it doesn't really... Procedure-wise, it's just fair to go forward with it.
Okay. If I'm looking at the agenda, and number seven says "public hearings," and I assume that that's what these people are here for.
You can simply ask the applicant to go ahead and make his presentation, if that's where we're at. Yeah, I think we'll... Mr. Martinez, if you would like to go to the podium, state your name, and present your appeal process or justification, and...
Mr. Chairman, may I have my attorney right next to me if I have anything that I should say or not say? I think I could probably pretty much disclose what the madam lady is addressing.
May I take the question on that side? Sure.
May I address you first?
Pardon me?
As representative, may I address you?
Please state both your names for the meeting.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm Sam Medeta. I'm the attorney for the appellant. Let me address the appeal. I believe it's properly done. The notice only requires that we provide notice of appeal, shall state specifically each and every decision from which an appeal is taken. The purpose is to give you notice as to what we're appealing. It doesn't say that we have to give an explanation as to why we're appealing. It just says, we just have to tell you why. Our notice of appeal says we disagree with the decision. There's one decision, which is the denial of his permit. We've... On our notice of appeal, we attached the decision. We said we disagree with this decision, each and every point, and we attached it. So that's providing you with notice that what we're appealing, if you... If we had known you wanted an explanation or point by point, we would have done that, but the statute doesn't require that. My client's...
Was there a fee paid for the appeal?
Yeah, he paid the fee, said... He didn't come prepared with a receipt, but he believed that they... I don't see how they would take an appeal without taking the money.
Didn't staff state that the fees have not been collected?
No, they're not... He has been collected.
So the fees have not been paid?
I think staff is saying that the fees have not been paid?
He says he paid the fee, and he didn't come with a receipt, because he wasn't prepared to be challenged on whether he paid his fee. I can't see how the town would take an appeal.
Chairman, as also, you know, just as a point of order, I think we're actually supposed to take the names of each individual and swear them in, under oath?
I'm not a witness, though. I guess you swear me in.
I can swear.
Okay, please swear him.
Do you raise your hand, please? If you solemn swear the testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Will you please both state your names for the record?
Oh, Sam Medeta.
Birmingham Martinez.
And, Mr. Martinez, did you pay the fee?
Well, there's a... It's a... The process for the applicant's procedure requirements for a public hearing does not state that there is a fee. I got a chance to visit with Dina Gonzalez on several occasions, and otherwise, I'm not even sure that she would have given me the instructions to not proceed on with my appeal. I took everything that was properly required. I have the application. It doesn't state a single fee on this application to appeal.
Mr. Martinez, did you pay the fee?
I think I did. I'm pretty sure I did.
Okay, go forward.
Oh, okay. So, anyway, what Mr. Bell has referred to is factual contentions. We disagree with those, but that's not really his finding. What we appealed is his find... We disagree with the factual contentions, but we've appealed his finding, which is the denial of his permit. If you review the factual contentions, and you put them in... You can put them in two categories. Number one, he's claiming my client violated the building code by not getting a permit, and then everything flowed from that. The second thing is, he says that the covenants do not allow home occupation or any commercial activity on the subdivision. Let me address the short one, which is the covenants. The covenants do not prohibit it, which means it's allowed. I have a copy of the covenants that I'd like to present to you, and if I could introduce them for the record. I've highlighted a portion of the covenants on page two. I'm going to give one to the town. Anyway, if you look... I believe it's page two. If you look on page...
Mr. Herron, if I may, was this included in your application to appeal?
It was. It's part of the requirements, is that we submit the covenants.
Thank you.
So if you look at page two, it's the portion I highlighted, it said that the covenants expire after 25 years. If you look at the date of the covenants, 25 years forward, they've expired, 10 years ago. There is a restriction within the covenants for commercial activity, but the covenants expired after 25 years, and so that restriction no longer. In fact, none of these covenants are valid anymore at all. And so, there is no restriction in the covenants, as Mr. Bell has indicated. The second broad category is about this building permit. First of all, my client did obtain a building permit. He did obtain one from the town. He did also obtain one, well, a permit for the electrical and the plumbing, and all that work's been completed. It was completed over two months ago. He's already had the... The electric and the plumbing is signed off by the state inspector. That's already been done. That's already been inspected. My client's been waiting two months for the town to do their part to inspect the property, and they have not done it. My understanding is now they don't have a building inspector, so there's nobody to inspect it anyway. My understanding is the reason they don't have a building inspector is because they discovered that he was not licensed or certified to do building inspections. And so, he did put a stop order on my client initially, so that stop order is illegal, because it turned out he wasn't really qualified or licensed to do that. So my client has complied. He's been waiting two months for the building inspection. The town refuses to come out and do it. So... But he's complied with that. He has his building permit. But let me go back to the beginning, which is the stop order. The town put a stop order on him and required him to get a building permit. What he was doing was painting the building, putting carpet, replacing doors. None of this, the state does not require a building permit for any of this work. What I've prepared for you is a copy of the... My client's building permit, and I've attached to it the state code requirements for building permits, and it says you need a building permit for everything except these things. And I've highlighted the portion, and there's an exception for painting, putting carpeting, doing finishing work, the type he was doing. If you review the state regulation on what's exempt, what you don't need a permit for, and look at his permit, you'll find that none of the stuff listed in his permit, he needs a permit anyway. So the whole gambit that the town was playing about putting a stop order on him and requiring him to get a building permit was a sham. He doesn't really need a building permit for that anyway, but they made him do it. He went ahead and did it. He had his permits for the stuff he does need a permit for, which is plumbing, electric. That's the state. That's not the town. So even though he wasn't required to get a building permit to paint a room in a house or to play carpet, he got a permit anyway, because of course, they put a stop order from him. On him, if you look at all this list of eight grievances that the town has, they're all related either to the building permit or lack thereof, or the, as I say, the covenants. So let me provide you with... What it is, is my client's application for a building permit and the state statute or the state regulation, which exempts all of his work from... All of his improvements from requiring a building permit. So the question then becomes is, well, he's complied with a building permit, and the town simply refuses to inspect his house, give him his certificate of occupancy. And it is the town that would give him the certificate of occupancy, the state. As I say, they've inspected the plumbing and electric, but they're... That's just a couple inspectors on the whole gamut of the certificate of occupancy. So he's complied with that. It's the town that refuses to inspect the building, and now they have no code, or they have no inspector. But all of this is a red herring, because if you read his decision, there's nothing in there where he says that my client is not complying with the requirements for home occupation. If you read what's required, he fulfills it. He falls within the ordinance. They're not saying your occupation is not the type that's allowed in the ordinance or anything like that. His complaints are all about the building permit and the covenants.
Mr. Herrera?
Yes?
I think if you look at page 64 of his statement, I guess it would be, oh, 1, 2, 3, 4 of this document, he says other... He gives other reasons in his findings for the denial of the permit, not just the building permit. For example, that the business is not a compatible use or a use that qualifies for a home occupation.
Well, I think it does. If you read it, it's a service.
Well, but you were saying that the only reason for the appeal, or the only thing he's denying it on, is the building permit.
No, we're not saying that's why. We're appealing his decision denying the permit.
Okay.
So... But if you review the code, he's... The code allows for a service, and he's providing a service. And I don't have the... I have the code here someplace, but if you go through the checklist provided by the ordinance, he fills... He fulfills everything. He falls within the ordinance for home occupation.
Well, I'll let you finish, and then I'll ask questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So anyway, his property is located... This property, I think they provided you with a map. Let me pull it out. Well, actually photographs. Anyway, 60... His occupation, as you know from your package, is traditionally called a bail-bondsman business, but that's kind of a misnomer these days. Bails-bondsman deal with... It's more of electronic device business, and the intent of the business is to have an administrative office. Most of this work is done in terms of dealing with people who are involved in the court system, is dealt with at the courthouse and at the jail. But this property is 60 feet from the jail. I think it's 60 feet. How many feet? 300 feet. I'm sorry. It's 300 feet from the jail, but if you look at the photograph that was provided you on his denial... You'll see here, there's the county complex, and here's the jail. And his is right across the street from the jail. And so, it just kind of astounds me that the... There's objection to a neighborhood that's 300 feet from the jail to say that this business isn't compatible with the surrounding area. However, I don't see the ordinance really requires that. If you look at the requirements for the home business, it doesn't list whether it's compatible or not. It simply lists, if you fall within these categories, then we allow it. You're compatible.
Do you believe it's compatible with the residential characteristics of the neighborhood?
Well, when the resident is butched on one end by a homeless...
In the zone that he's in, it's a residential zone. It's R4.
Yes. May I answer? One end of the resident, the neighborhood, is a homeless shelter, and the other end is a jail. That bookends the whole neighborhood. I think that...
But it doesn't bookend the zone. The zone is clearly defined. That's different. The neighborhood is...
Well, I don't see the ordinance requiring that it comply with the zone. It does comply with the zone, because as I say, he fits all the elements that's required for home occupation in that particular zone. And so, now, if you're saying it's whether it complies with the character of the neighborhood...
I'm asking you for clarification. I'm not saying...
I'm sorry?
I'm just asking you for clarification. Sorry.
Oh, well, I think when you have a homeless shelter on one end of a neighborhood and a jail on the other end, that his type of business is consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay.
I mean, if you're living next to a jail and you complain about having a jail next to you, that's the character of the neighborhood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just along this discussion that you're having, those homes have been there way before the jail came in, and I don't know how the county got permission to build that close to an R4 with homes in it. So the picture that you're painting is much more negative than is the truth.
I'm not sure how much more negative, but yeah, I don't know how... What the county did or whatever to build the jail, then I would agree that the jail was built after, since it was only built a few years ago.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may, excuse me. This is not quite a good argument anyway for me, because the jail was there all along before. It just got moved a little closer to that neighborhood, but it had been there for as long as I can recall. So...
That's true.
You know, to bring that up is...
Thank you.
It's... I mean, that's the neighborhood. That's what it's been like for 30, 40 years or longer, probably.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And one more comment.
Yes.
You were talking about permits and inspections at one point, and I have a statement of findings that says that a final inspection was scheduled for December the 6th, but the state CID electrical inspection had not yet been completed. So the final inspection could not be performed. We have since received the final electrical on January the 6th, but have not subsequently received a request from the owner to re-inspect. So you said he'd had it for two months, not according to this?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. And that letter's November 24th.
Well, what I have is January the 3rd.
Oh, I don't have that letter, but I think since after that time, he got the missing inspection, and he's been waiting for the town inspector to inspect it.
I could probably clarify that, ma'am?
Okay.
If you wish, Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure.
Actually... Actually, just to give you an overview, back in, actually, six months today, we've been dealing with this situation. We came to the Realtor, of course, to buy some real property. And Martha Perkins was the code enforcement at that point. We came in here with a far, or she gave us the R4 zone. And I told her what the intent was, and I provided all the paperwork to her, and she says, with my Realtor, to go ahead and proceed with a purchase, because the R4 court certainly allowed for that. Anyway, and it's pretty clear, and it says here, services which are developed on the premises and provided on or off the premises. And it's pretty clear that the code is there. Just the other part that Mr. Bellis was addressing, the zone spotting, I went through the Aseca commissioners, they gave me authorization. I went through the private property owner. I called the state engineer. I called the Corps of Engineers, and I says, if we have to remove your bridge, we're gonna have to remove fifty of them all the way to Don Carlos. You know, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I'm not sure how versed he is in federal law, Mr. Bellis, but that was pretty much what they tell me. Now, we go to the New Mexico CID, which sort of supervises all the codes throughout the state of New Mexico. And he told me, if I have to go to Taos and enforce the signing of that document, it's not going to be pleasant. And that was Mr. Martin Romero. So he's been in touch with us almost every other day. Some of the things that, going back to when I purchased the place, it was pretty clear, and it provides, you know, if you want to review some of these documents, he's a businessman. They pretty much know what the zones call for, and what we need to uphold. So it's been almost like a circus, if, excuse the phrase, going back and forth to the town, providing me with a stop order that doesn't cite a code. And then the state says, well, what do you need? You don't need for this, that, and the other. They come in, and they just laugh, and they approve the things. We have the approvals here on, for the electrical, for the plumbing, and so on, so forth. So then they say, you're building onto it. That place has been built since seventy-six. There's no additions to that building. The only cosmetic work has been improved, because that place was broken into. I have the copies from Police Department, the times that they've broken into, people that live in the neighborhood, some of those same individuals that were in that neighborhood before. So the, if you go see that place, I got three grandkids, and my daughter and my son-in-law, they moved from Denver all the way to provide a livelihood. I think Taos was supposed to be a friendly business town, if you followed the rules. And now we're facing obstacle after obstacle, and without any proof that there is indeed any violation, the, as one attorney was expressing, that the values would diminish. The engineer or the appraisal has never been there. They haven't seen the facility. So it's just a personal thing. That's, I found it discrimination to, at its very best or very worst in that regard. And I hate to use that, because, you know, as a person coming, living in Taos here, I hate to use that phrase, simply because that's how I feel. And I have to, you know, at this point, address it with other real estate commissioners, HUD, the courts even at that. So that's one of the things that, that's, and it's a simple process. If this panel would just follow what they provided to me, the RF court, and the things that I'm entitled to provide that service, we do, some of those bail bonds that they say that thugs, as people put it, and the people that are contesting, the bails are put at the detention center. The GPSs, those are devices that are monitored, the individuals. They're not at my house. I wouldn't have those detainees at my house with my grandkids. The other thing is that, I'm not even sure how sophisticated those, how people, if they know how they function, they're placed at the jail, they're released to a facility, or to some surrounding, we provide that information to the judges, to the district attorneys, and to the rest of the individuals that are involved. So those devices are placed at the jail, the bail bonds are placed at the jail, and nothing has to do but administrative work, and that we flush or fax papers back and forth. That's the extent. You don't see a thug going back and forth. Law enforcement goes out there to pick up perhaps a warrant that needs to be executed on a certain individual, to show that we have, that we have some jurisdiction over that individual. And they claimed that it was not secured. You can see law enforcement driving up, and now it's more secure that neighborhood now than it ever was. I have reports here, but times, a number of times, and it was a whole, well, several times, that law enforcement was called to, to report a break-in into that dwelling. So I'm not even sure what the neighborhood is trying to promote against myself and my family, but in Mr. Bellis and the town.
Mr. Martinez, so we don't get off course here and so forth, I think we need to refocus on the appeal that you requested. And a question I do have is, in reference to the letter that was submitted or supplied to you on the date of November the twenty-fourth, did you sit down with the town and with the acting director to discuss those claims or issues?
Mr. Chairman, actually, I've come, I don't know how many trips I've made from Arroyo Seco, from here, just to try to visit with the town manager, with the planning department, with the code enforcement. And most of the time, I left, I don't know how many messages for the town manager and the code enforcement person, and then the secretary not giving me the proper information, the right information that I needed. So it was, it was almost a daily routine, Mr. Chairman, that I was doing that with, trying to get the proper information that was needed to be able to move into that facility. And the only thing that they gave us was things that I was not supposed to do. They'd slap another, another stop order without citing a code.
Okay. I think at this time, unless commissioners have some questions for the palant-
Sure.
Which I think, go ahead. Okay.
Mr. Martinez, you stated that most of the business related to the bail bonds and the tracking is done at the detention center.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering who the clients are that are using the facility currently. The town has claimed that they've seen people come and go. The neighbors have reported that they see business being conducted. You've built a parking lot to accommodate business clients. It doesn't jive for me.
I think this is American. I can either purchase some property that's adjacent to it or not. And that was probably, I was trying to facilitate the individuals that were protesting and appealing the move-in. So anytime that, I don't think that it's even related to my, to my home occupation certification. That's a place that, I wasn't going to park there, or I wasn't going to move in there, because it's, the understanding between the person of that real property and myself. I was trying to accommodate that neighborhood in so many ways. The people that they, that they claim, going back to the question that it would promote thugs and things of nature, I have criminal complaints here for individuals that the parents, the parents of these individuals walk back and forth. So those aren't, my clients are the ones that are in jail. They go to the houses, they go to residential treatment facilities, they're-
Are you saying the parents live in the neighborhood?
Well, I've got some, if you want to go to that extent, I've got some individuals that live with the parents that have criminal complaints, if you want to go to that extent, but, because I'm-
No.
They're blaming, that I'm inviting thugs, as they put it, into that neighborhood. That's not the case.
Okay. You've answered my question. Question about the illegal crossing of the floodplain. If I'm not mistaken, that requires a 404 permit to construct in the floodplain? What is it?
Can you read it from there?
Well, the, first of all, here's, you want me to read the, I'd rather you see it.
Fine. What I'm looking for is approval from the Army Corps of Engineer that says you've got permission to build a bridge in the floodplain. Does the town have a copy of this?
No. I submitted all that information to the town.
This is the Aseca committee. This is not-
That's right.
That's not what I asked for.
Exactly, exactly. But let-
No, okay. The question was asked-
Construction in a federally managed floodplain requires a 404 permit. For your neighbors to say it's okay doesn't mean anything to us as a board. This is the Aseca.
Well, let me explain that. Let me explain that. First of all, there's a political, well, there's a pretty confusing, it's either the Rio Fernández, or it's a political subdivision, an Aseca. Okay? The Mayordomos are the ones that tell me, the state engineer, go with the commission. I went with the commission. That's a letter that signed, authorizing me to put that bridge. The private owner, so when I called the state engineer, I says, do I have to get ahold of the Corps of Engineers? And I told him exactly where it was located. I called a secretary at the Corps of Engineers and says, how many bridges are there? Who gave you approval? And I faxed that information to them, and I says, there's about forty or fifty bridges. I counted that many, all the way from where I'm at, from the jail, all the way to Don Carlos. Everybody's got a bridge in that, in that, in that Aseca. Everybody's got a bridge. So I'm not even sure if that's the right, if that's a right term for, it's either the Rio, or it's the Aseca, who's got jurisdiction. They told me, as long as the commissioners authorized it, and that's the letter that authorized me to install the bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Mr. Patterson, you had some questions?
Mr. Martinez, you said prior to buying the property, that you had visited with Ms. Perkins-
Yes, sir.
About home occupation for that property.
That's right.
And did, did you start doing business there before you had a home occupation?
No. That place was broken into before.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So when you bought the property, you were aware that you had to apply for a home occupation permit?
Yes, I applied at that time, and she provided-
Did you start running business out of that property-
No.
Before you had that permit?
No. We couldn't run any business. We couldn't do anything. There were, you know, it was just a place that needed to, a lot of cosmetic work. We needed to be painting, we need to replace some-
So have you been doing business out of this property?
Not yet, no. I operate, I have my license from Arroyo Seco, from El Salto. I have a company license from-
So so far, you've done no business out of this property?
No, no.
Okay.
But I have three children, three grandchildren here, and my daughter and her husband that have moved in.
Okay, thank you. The scope of work that you applied for on the building permit implied that you were doing new windows and doors at the property?
Yes, sir.
Did the new windows involve any lath or plaster on the exterior of the property?
Not on the outside. If you go out to that place, if you see a, that extent of cosmetic work with a cement outside on those windows is too much.
So there was, there was lath and plaster done on the exterior of the windows?
Well, limited, of course. When you put a window, or you put a door, you've got to seal it up, and you pretty much know the process.
Sure.
Yes.
So when window replacement involves lath and plaster, you need a building permit?
Well, uh-
So once you're doing lath and plaster on the exterior of the building, you need lath inspections, and you need a building permit?
Not according to CID.
That is according to CID.
Well, that's a-
Do you have a thing written from CID that states otherwise?
I couldn't understand.
Yep.
Can I just say he's completed the work and waiting for the inspection? So I don't know if it's really the issue. He got the permit.
My question, Mr. Herrera, is that previously you stated that none of the work that has been done required a building permit?
That's my understanding.
When, and regardless of what CID says, the jurisdiction for this is the town of Taos. So if the town of Taos says a building permit is required for that scope of work, they have the right to require a building permit for that scope of work.
Well, if they require it, he got a permit.
That's all.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Mr. Martinez, of the inspections that had been done, or they had red-tagged you on as far as electrical and plumbing and so forth, have you gotten those inspections done already? And were they approved with no problem through the state?
Without any problem.
And what was the extent of the electrical that you had done out there? I mean, was it extensive, or was it?
It was, we had to replace some fixtures that had been broken, and it was pretty minimal as far as the electrical replacements.
And I just got another comment. I mean, we grew up there behind that place, or a couple of blocks from there, and growing up, and still now, it's my family that lives there and stuff, we still have a lot of people that walk back and throw, back and forth through that road, the Court of, down into Los Fuentes Road and stuff, so. I mean, that's happened since I was a kid. That's just a comment.
Commissioner Pollard?
Chair, and my questions, I want to try and continue to concentrate on whether or not this is a legitimate home occupation under the code, whether or not the businesses that you wish to operate out of here are permitted under the code. I'm unclear as to how many businesses there are. Can you shed some light on that?
There, in the neighborhood? Yes.
Sorry?
Oh, yes.
No, in this, you're proposing to do one business or two businesses?
One business. It's one, one-
And what is that business?
It's, we, I do bail bonds, okay, for the courts, for the district courts. I do bails through-
Do you issue bail bonds?
Yes.
You issue?
No, 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 no. That's where people are, what I do is, every time a person falls into the judicial system, they fall in jail. They go to jail. And the courts have said some, some protocol to be able to post bail to get out of there. Do you follow me?
I understand the process.
Those are the bails that are posted throughout the nation.
Right, I understand the process.
That you're entitled to reasonable bail. So if they call me, or call someone else to post bail, we go to the detention center, because that's where they're held. That's where they're held. And then we do an application there at the jail, and we either post-
No, I guess, let me clarify my question, or ask it just a different way. The nature of the business that you're going to conduct, is it, are you a bail bondsman, or are you a bail bond solicitor?
Well, it, whatever term you want to use, I do bail bonds-
Well, you must, I think you're licensed, so you know what term-
Of course, of course, we're licensed by the state of New Mexico.
As a bail bondsman?
As a solicitor.
As a solicitor.
As a solicitor, yeah.
And who performs the actual bail bond work, then, for you?
Myself. I'm licensed by the-
Who do you solicit for?
For, well, we don't, for Tony Madrid Bundy. They're the, he's the principal, or the agent, rather.
Okay, so you have a business where you, as a solicitor, you're basically representing your principal, who is Tony Madrid?
Exactly, Tony Madrid Bundy, yes.
And you conduct business under his guidance?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, you also mentioned something about some bracelets, isn't that, is that, is that under Mr. Madrid as well?
No, 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 that's an independent, I'm a contractor for that, for those-
So that's a second business?
It's, well, it's pretty much, they're together, to, if they, if a judge requires to put a GPS on an individual to be able to track him or her out of that facility, to have those conditions restricted to him or her, those are the things that we put in place. And they're placed at the jail, they're removed at the jail.
But it sounds like you do two things. You do two businesses. I just want to be clear.
Yeah.
You're permitted to do two businesses under the code. It's not a trick.
Well, and I don't think, I don't think that I would call it two different businesses, because they're incorporated together. It's, you know, they're, they're related.
All right, okay. I don't want to keep, continue to tie this up. Who are the clients who come to this building, who will come to the building, under those two different activities? Who comes to you for the bail bond soliciting work?
Well, they, they call me normally from the jail.
Okay.
From the jail. That's where they, those calls originate, either at the jail, or they originate at the courts. I'm at the courts, district courts, I'm at the magistrate courts, I'm in municipal courts, almost on a daily basis. And that's where they actually originate. If a judge would post a bond in addition to GPS for a certain individual, then they, they submit all that paperwork, all those, the conditions of release, we go to the jail, we, I'm authorized by the county attorney and by the county manager to be able to go into that facility, just like an officer of the courts, so to speak, and place those monitors of those individuals. They're placed right there at the detention center. Then we follow, we put either inclusion or exclusion zones for those individuals where they can be, where they-
I'm sorry, my question, I got misled there. My question had to do with your bail bond soliciting activity, first, just that part of it. Who comes to this building? Who will come to this building?
To my, to the, to the house- To my, to the, to the house...
To where you're going to operate the home occupation.
Arminio, my daughter, and maybe law enforcement once in a while if we need to pick up, to execute a warrant, so to speak, for a person that failed to, not those individuals that I bailed out, they don't go out there.
No individuals, no family, no friends, nobody else, so you're basically, that part of it you're suggesting is administrative work that you do out of the building?
That's all we do, we do mostly administrative work.
That there's no clients coming in?
No. You go to any bail agency and we don't, I would, in my situation, I would never put my three grandkids in it.
I understand. So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, I don't want to keep this going all night. But on the second business, who comes to the business? This monitoring bracelet?
I go to the courts.
Who comes into your building or who will? No one comes in?
No, no.
All right, well, that's probably where my confusion is. Why did you need to build a bridge then?
Because the people that were, well, I know the neighbor that's got that piece of property. And I was in the process of buying some land from him. In fact, I'm still in the process of buying a good chunk of land for another business, not related to mine, but for some other person. So I know the owner of the property and he says, "I'll sell you this piece of land."
Well, I...
Some I can afford, some I cannot.
I paid a visit to the site, as we're supposed to, and that's a pretty hefty bridge, it's an expensive bridge.
It's a, it's a...
An extensive concrete sidewalk, you've got an extensive concrete ramp...
That's right, that's right. If I have to walk through there, I want to make sure it's safe.
And you've got a lot of base course laying there, which evidently is for a park area.
That I'm gonna spread, yeah.
So who do you expect to park there?
Well, if I have to park there, I would park there. If I have to park there, that's very limited in the back, but if I have to park there, I can park there.
But you don't intend it to be any clients?
No, no, it's mostly administratively. It's, I wish you would, if you would follow me to the court someday, I'd show you exactly how the process works. Ninety-nine percent of the people don't know, not even judges, how it functions, how it works.
Mr. Martinez, I think he's answered the question, so I think we need to go forward. Any other commissioners or questions? I do want to kind of limit this a little bit, we do have people in the audience that need to, would like to speak, so, you know...
I'll be quick. Question for Mr. Herrera. You mentioned the covenants earlier, and despite the fact that they're 25 years old, number one says the lath should be used for residential purposes only. Are you saying because it doesn't specifically prohibit businesses, that businesses can be there?
Yeah, what I'm saying is that the covenants expire after 25 years, and it says so in the covenants. And so anything in that piece of paper that I gave you doesn't apply anymore.
So he gave it to you?
The portion I highlighted says that they expire after 25 years. So there effectively are no covenants in this neighborhood. And in fact, there's a lot of other businesses in the neighborhood, there's...
Not in the residential portion of the neighborhood.
My understanding is there's a bed and breakfast, a contractor has his home office there, and a realtor also has it.
Bed and breakfasts are used as by right in a residential area. There are no other businesses in the R4.
Commissioner Durham, I think we need to go ahead and go forward with some comments from the, from the audience. I'd like to get a show of hands of how many people will be speaking, just to have an idea. Five, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Okay, I'm gonna try to limit this to what you can say or comments for maybe three minutes each, if possible, or five, or four minutes. You know, if we, there's 10 of you, three minutes, that's a half hour. So if you can basically state your name, and I think, Mr. Lopez, if you don't mind swearing them in, and then just make your comments. So if you want to line up, you know, we'll do it that way.
Mr. Chair, I would ask if they come to the...
Okay, so, yes, please, just so...
Why not have them up there, because they're gonna have to follow the response, so... Whatever.
You saw this on the testimony about the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Joseph Caldwell. I'm here because every single person who is a resident or a renter in the R4 district that we're talking about has filed a protest of what is happening here. Now, I think that's important, but I don't want you to understand the fact that they've all protested is important. What's important is the reasons why they've protested here. In doing so, I have to go back just a little bit because you have a packet in front of you, and part of that packet involves the applications that Mr. Martinez has made for a residency and a business, a residential occupation permit and a business permit in the R4 district. Now, Mr. Lucero, you're absolutely right. That original courthouse complex was built in 1969, and we both remember it because we were both around at that time. Now, nothing has changed. That R4 district has been an R4, well, it was an R2 then, it was, became an R4 after that, but it was, there was always a county complex on one side, always had a jail. So there is no change of any kind, except the complex is moved a little closer because finally somebody tore down that courthouse and got a decent one that they can use right now, which I'm very happy about, I must say. Now, the issue involves what Mr. Martinez has done. And once again, I want to let you know that in his packet, here's what you see, and this is what he put in his packet. His tax number for the state of New Mexico is in Arroyo Seco. The application he made is for a business called EMTZ Tracking Systems. And you will not find that anywhere. What you will find online in every place, including, because he just indicated he's not doing business there, is that even though the permit has been denied up until this moment, I have nine different advertisements for his business at 404 Mora Lane that have been filed since November 24th of 2014. So don't kid yourself, they're doing business there even though they've been denied a permit. But why is this important? It's important because at the very beginning, he had an office at 515 Gustorff Lane in the C2 district, more than 300 feet from any residential area, and it was just fine. But he got evicted in June. Part of the reasons for the eviction are part of a, an affidavit that has been filed, and I hope is part of your packet, from Pavel Luks, who was his landlord, explaining to you just exactly what that business was like, and how it was a 24/7 business with people showing up at all hours of the day, very unruly, very obstreperous characters, and that they literally could not deal with it. Now, that is, again, part of the record in this case, I hope, at least it was filed, and I hope it has been made part of the record. In any event, that affidavit indicates to you just exactly what we're talking about. Now, a bail bond business by all of their advertisement, and I'll be happy to make these part of the record for you, is a 24/7 business. In fact, every bail bondsman says that. "We are here for you 24/7." And the reason they do that is because that is the nature of their business. Here's what I, he also didn't tell you. He was evicted, he bought this property, he and Amy bought it in July, and the next thing that happened was Tony Madrid lent them the money to buy this property and has a mortgage on that property, which, again, we have filed and I hope is part of the record in this case. Now, whose business is this?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair and Commissioner.
Yes.
The documents that Judge Call is referring to were submitted today, they have not been copied as part of the record, but if you want to submit them at this time, and when you get caught, we think this is part of the package, go ahead and take it.
All right, thank you.
And once again, I would like to make them part of the package because this is part of the really important part of why we're here. This business isn't his. Under New Mexico law, section 53A, 51, Pac. 13 of the New Mexico's insurance code, a bail bond business must be operated in the name of the bail bondsman at a street address named for the bail bondsman, not a solicitor. Amy and Arminio are solicitors for a bail bondsman. And that job description is pretty complete, isn't it? They drum up business for a bail bondsman, but they are not the bail bondsman, and it is not their business. If you look at their application, they said, "This is a home occupation, we are the owners of the business and we are going to occupy this residence." And that is a ball face lie. Tony Madrid is the owner of that business. Now, I would like to have Ray Garcia, who has been a lifelong probation officer, talk about the other part when he gets an opportunity, because he has plenty of observations about what clientele are going to be there. And don't believe this man, they're gonna show up. The minute you give him that license, people are gonna show up, and the town of Tass will have to spend every day with phone calls trying to make sure that this doesn't happen. You have no way to control that, none at all. Now, I think I've taken more than my three minutes.
Yes.
My only question right now is, there are a lot of people to speak. One of the issues involves the loss of value in this property because of the kind of businesses it is, which I've just described. I have a memorandum that I filed that I believe is part of the record in this case, and I want you to study it just to see where I'm coming from about what I just told you. But when you also look at residential occupations, there is no way this meets the criteria of an occupation. And Mark Cowan has some other issue that he's got to deal with. I would ask you to hear him, he is a licensed appraiser, and he's gonna tell you just exactly what the impact on the value of these houses are gonna be if you let this business happen.
Thank you, sir.
You saw this on the testimony about the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And when you state your name, go ahead.
My name's Mark Cowan, I know some of you, not all of you. I was asked to write an opinion on value and influence for this particular business in this particular neighborhood. I'm familiar with the property and the neighborhood. And so I did some research and wrote a sort of a summary letter that I think you folks have in your packet.
Mr. Cowan, why don't you indicate the experience and knowledge that you have in that industry, while I think most of us do know that, but I think for the record?
Okay. So I've been a real estate appraiser and consultant in Taos for about 31 years. And I do work for the town of Taos, I do work for individuals, the federal government, the state of New Mexico, and I deal with stigmatized properties from a valuation standpoint on occasion. And that's kind of my story here.
Thank you.
So my firm is Mark Cowan and Associates, and we have various levels of real estate-related valuation, counseling, and consulting that we do.
Thank you.
So the, this is, we don't need to make this rocket science, and you guys have the stuff, it really has to do with market perception. And if you have a house that's adjacent to a property like a bail bonding facility or something similar, and you have another house that's not adjacent to it in a different neighborhood, that it's not hard to imagine that the house that's not adjacent to it would get chosen by a purchaser. The other aspect of this is that the, because of some past court cases, the real estate community is required to disclose these kinds of businesses and noxious influences to their buyers, prospective buyers. And so it would be a stretch to say that the presence of the business and what would happen there would not be common knowledge. Certainly, Taos being a small town makes it even more common knowledge, but the fact that it would have to be disclosed would be an issue. So we haven't, what we look for as an appraiser, when we look for what we call noxious or properties or things that could stigmatize a neighborhood, it has to do with the market perception of health, safety, welfare, and the preservation of the value. And so the market perception of these kinds of businesses or the kinds of people that might utilize these businesses is not good. So there is an adverse situation and a loss in value. In fact, when you have a scenario where a business, and it doesn't have to be a business like this, it could be some other business, it could be the fact that, for whatever reason, another noxious influence was allowed in or around the neighborhood, then you subject yourself to almost a downzoning of that particular property or that area, and then that subjects municipalities, towns, governments, et cetera, to inverse condemnation actions due to the loss in value. There's one pretty good case about that in Santa Fe. So that's some of the concerns, and I'm just telling you what we look for as appraisers when we look at this stuff. Trying to talk fast here for you. The spirit of the code, of course, is something that has to be considered, but the fact that you do have a noxious influence, you do have a potentially a use that would stigmatize an area, will have an adverse impact on value. How much that impact is, remains to be seen. I mean, we can do the studies, we have not done the studies to get the exact amount. Some studies that I reference here show losses of 10 to 20 percent, 17 percent was the most recent one that was done, I believe, in terms of overall loss in value to a particular area. And it has to do with the extended marketing time, and it has to do with the lack of, the reduced number of buyers and therefore the lack of bargaining power by that seller to sell their property. So it's, those are, those are the economic issues that influence the value. So it's, it's, you know, I mean, it's, as I said earlier, it's, it doesn't take a lot of thought to understand that a typical purchaser would rather purchase a property that wasn't in a location with one of these businesses, so...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you indulge me for, I just wanted to deal with this covenant issue for just a second, and I was in such a hurry, I forgot. Would you permit me to at least make a 15-second statement?
Okay, 15 minutes, okay. 15 seconds, 15 seconds.
Read the covenants. They're in effect 25 years from the date of the recording.
You might want to state it, then...
Sure.
Read the covenants, they're in effect 25 years from the date of recording. They were recorded on May 25th of 1991, they are still in effect.
Thank you. Next.
You saw this on the testimony about the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you'll state your name.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Joseca Reyno. My wife and I are the owners of one of the houses affected at 416 Mora Lane. And we currently have a tenant there, Andrew Lantman, who has expressed extreme concern about what's going on there because he's seen all the wanderers around the neighborhood and what have you. And he has told us that, you know, should things turn out adversely for the neighborhood, that he will probably have to move out. So there is an adverse thing already happening as a result of this. But anyway, I want to bring you to, under the municipal code, right at the very beginning, the purposes, it says, "To increase the safety of the neighborhoods," and I'm just taking pieces of it, "and protect the stability and character of the neighborhood." And obviously, what has been portrayed here is not going to do either of those things. It is, regardless of what you've heard from Mr. Martinez and his folks, there is traffic going on, and, you know, my tenant has told me that he has seen people in and out of that area and around the neighborhood. So there are effects going on. Another thing that I want to bring to your attention is the letter from Mr. Cunningham of 10-9-14 to Mr. Martinez, where Mr. Cunningham authorizes them to utilize my corner property for his business parking. So obviously, that section that's been cleared with the bridge and everything is for that business purpose. And that's also, that's contrary to what the code states, that it has to be self-contained. So, there's a lot of errors going on here that Mr. Martinez is trying to gloss over. But the last thing I, well, one of the last things I want to say is that, just think about what the impact would be if your immediate neighborhood got this type of business in it. Would you be pleased, would you, that you had this kind of thing going on? I don't think so. So, and the last thing I want to say is just that, excuse me, but I get emotional at this part, I am appalled that Mr. Martinez would bring any kind of race or whatever into this discussion. My wife and I, we're Hispanic, we've been, we lived there for 15 years before we moved out. And we were always very welcome, nobody had a harsh or any kind of words at all with my daughter or anybody. So that's, that's just a bogus thing that has been brought up, and I hope you overlook it. And the fact that you have no proof of any of these things that, somebody said this, or, you know... you know, well, I think I paid the fee, and you have absolutely no hard proof of any of these things that have been claimed, or a bunch of those things that have been claimed, should just make it automatic for you to deny this. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do. My name is Renaldo Garcia. I'm a lifetime resident of Taos. I've lived at Casitas del Rio approximately 30 years this coming summer. So I've been there a long time. I think I was the fourth house that was built there, Casitas del Rio. And it's very interesting because during the time that we were, our house was under construction and it took me four years to complete the house, we'd leave everything outside. And someone in the neighborhood, the other three houses, would take care of your tools and everything else. So we've never had any problems in the area. The reason Judge Caldwell wanted me to speak to you is I have 38 years of experience in working with the judicial system. I finally retired last April, and I worked 25 years with juvenile probation. And then soon after I retired in 2000, I got a call to go direct the adult drug court. So I worked directly with drug court clients, felony offender adults, that at times were referred for the ankle bracelet. And six years later, I was hired by the judges to direct the drug, to oversee the drug court clients in the district, not only here in Taos but in Colfax County. So I have plenty of experience in seeing the type of services that Mr. Martinez wants to operate. I didn't work directly with the ankle bracelets, but I was in a facility where they would install the ankle bracelets. Now, in repeating what Judge Caldwell indicated, basically bail bonding is a 24/7 job. That's how we found out what Mr. Martinez was doing when we saw the vehicles coming in and out of our neighborhood. I don't know if any of you have actually visited our neighborhood, but in the past, 70% of Taosanials never knew that place existed. It's a real quiet area on Casitas del Rio. 13 homes are built there. So it's been very quiet. Since Mr. Martinez purchased the home on July 28th, approximately two weeks later, we could see the traffic. And it was, a lot of the traffic were either family members or friends of people who had been placed in jail and needed a bail bondsman to take that individual out. So, I mean, the traffic has continued to come. It subsided somewhat since they received the letter that they would not be given the home occupancy, but the business continues to operate. It's sad because in identifying the electric monitoring system that they would be operating, one is the sober link equipment. That's basically when you install an ankle bracelet and a device in their home of the offender, and it, within time, it goes off every so many days or every so many hours, and the offender has to blow into the system. Basically, what the system does is takes a picture of the individual, it documents the time, and it gives you the sobriety reading. Now, the reason I bring that up is in running the adult drug court, we dealt with felony offenders. There's some DWI offenders that we had as participants. Of course, in order for it to become a felony, in most cases, it's got to be a fourth, a fourth DWI, unless, of course, they're charged with numerous crimes. We had an individual that was placed on the sobrieter who was there on a sixth DWI, a sixth DWI. And the sad part about the sobrieters, you can monitor if they're consuming, but alcohol is the hardest type of drug to deal with. We don't have the facilities in New Mexico to be able to send someone where they can be there for a year or two. Six months doesn't work. The only facility we have in Taos is the one by Tri-County, the Detox Center. That's only for seven days. So placing them, when we're talking about placing someone on the sober link machine, you need to provide the intensive supervision. It's not just placing them and waiting for the reading to come in. You need to call the offenders in, find out, are they working? Are they allowed to work? What are they doing? Where are they living? Who do they hang around with? So they have to come into the building. And that's exactly what was happening where I worked. They'd see them at least twice a week. You just can't do it in the county jail, send them out, wait for the readings, because when we're talking about this type of offender, they'll pull anything on you. The other thing that they have now is what's called a SCRAM unit. It's basically an ankle bracelet that's put on close to your ankle, and through your pores, the body pores, it will show whether you've been consuming alcohol or not. And there again, you need to have the individual come in, make sure that you check the equipment and whatnot. So the type of services that Mr. Martin, I think we need the services to some extent, but you can understand the type of clients that will be coming in if you're providing the adequate supervision. If you're not, I mean, they're going to be out there. And those are things you need to realize. I think if you look at the definition of home occupancy, there's no way in heck that you can have bail bondsmen where friends are trying to get their friend released that was picked up at 2:00 in the morning. They don't wait till the next morning. They go out and find out how they can get that person out. And it works the same with the ankle bracelet. If you're going to be providing the adequate supervision, you need to see those people in your place of employment. There's a lot of factors involved in that, and those are things that this program needs. You know, I feel for the Martines because they purchased that house there. But at the same time, we didn't know, how I learned about them providing services was from construction workers that were building a house right next to my house. They knew before any of the community members found out. We didn't know a thing about it. So that's where we're coming from. We're real concerned because, you know, in the past, we'd always look over each other's homes when someone was going on vacation, and to some extent, we still do that. But to have a program like this coming in, it's very unique because I've talked to several friends of mine that have worked in the judicial system statewide, people that have already volunteered, they can't recall of any type of services like these in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Peggy Stahl. I've been a resident of Taos for 40 years and a resident of the Casas del Rio neighborhood for 15. As a resident of the Casas del Rio neighborhood, I have very serious concerns about the home occupation of Arminio Martinez and Amy Romero. Until they moved in, my neighbors and I enjoyed a quiet and very friendly residential neighborhood. Since August 2014, we have had unsavory people knocking on doors at all hours, looking in windows of the neighbors, parking in the street, and hanging out at the house. The house has obviously been remodeled into an office with a bridge built across the Rio Fernando to their parking lot and a piece of property they do not own. The town of Taos denied Mr. Martinez's application for a home occupation, but Mr. Martinez and Ms. Romero have utterly defied the orders of the denial. They have been observed receiving clients, doing paperwork with them, and putting on ankle bracelets. They frequently park in the parking lot and use the bridge for access to the detention center. After the order to cease and desist immediately, they brought in gravel for the parking lot and poured a cement pad for access to the bridge after they received the denial. We have also been informed that our property values will very likely plummet if this business is allowed here. Bail bonding is a 24-hour service, as you've heard over and over, seven days a week. The clients could be anyone charged or convicted of any crime, as well as those requiring the ankle bracelet or alcohol monitoring. I no longer feel safe in my home. It is completely unacceptable to have a business like that with its clientele imposed on a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm one of the few people here tonight, and maybe the only person here tonight, that is not--
Excuse me, did you state your name?
I will, okay. My name is Terry Evans. I live in Rancho de Taos. I've been a resident in this area for 14 years.
Thank you.
First of all, it astonishes me that a person is trying to put a business such as we've heard in various degrees in this residential area. This is one of the prettiest neighborhoods. I have friends there. That's why I'm here. It's like when you leave Pueblo de Sur and you make that corner, you feel like you've gone from the Sahara to an oasis. It's just absolutely wonderful back there. And I consistently enjoy going back there. One of the reasons that I came here tonight is that I've been a parole and probation officer for 33 years in Maryland, Virginia, and New Mexico. I am very familiar, I should say I'm retired. I am very familiar with the bail bondsman process. It doesn't vary very much from one state to the other, so I wouldn't take that too much in concern. But as you've heard again, and I'm going to tell you again, this business goes on 24 hours a day. That's what they advertise. That's the way they work. I know many bail bondsmen, and that's where they get their money. They need to be open that much time. Also, that particular process of just the bail bondsman aspect is going to bring people into the area at all times. We've heard that they don't want to go to the jail. That's not going to be true at all. There's going to be people that don't make the right connections, and their parents are at one place and everything. So there's going to be congestion there, people trying to get their loved ones out of prison. I would leave you with this, and I'm not going to be long, and I know you're glad of This is no stranger to what I've done in the past. In my years of parole and probation in Maryland, I requested, went right through this process, of trying to get a parole and probation office, which you can argue bail bondsman is less than or that. I won't argue that fact. I want to tell you what happened. I was refused every time, and it was commercial. If you go to Albuquerque, to their main office, you will find out that they can't move because they can't find a place to have them. So although there is not a link there per se, it tells you what type of people you're dealing with and the types of problems you're going to have. As far as the monitors are concerned, I've monitored, I don't even want to guess, 400 people. There's constant problems with this. I don't care what you hear about technology. There's constant problem, they're cutting them off, there's actually, they've done nothing wrong and the equipment doesn't work. So that's a process that needs some type of interaction between whoever's operating this show as far as the monitors are concerned and the people involved. They're going to meet, and they're going to meet in that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Go ahead. You go ahead.
My name is Nancy Baystall.
I'm Douglas Baystall. We live at 418 Mora Lane, and I have lived in Taos my entire life. I've known Mr. Lucero, Mr. Romero for many, many years. You guys know my family. And, you know, this whole thing, it just seemed like it's a waste of our time. It's a waste of your time being here this evening. I wanted to give you, because it's been brought up, there is a copy of the warranty deed that was in your packet. When I was going through the packet looking to see what was in there, I happened to notice that the deed restrictions weren't in there. And it says on the warranty deed, it's subject to these deed restrictions. And I know it was brought up that the deed restrictions, the first thing it says is that it's, it says that his warranty deed, he's subject to restrictive covenants for Casas del Rio subdivision. And the first thing in that is that it says that said lots be used for residential purposes only. I've got the filing date that this was recorded, if you guys want to see that. Nancy, you want to read your thing first?
This is just really quick. We purchased the home at 416 Mora approximately 26 years ago. We loved the neighborhood so much. It was very quiet. It was very secluded. It was very low traffic, and it had no noxious influences. So we purchased the house next door at 418 Mora and subsequently sold the one at 416. After purchasing 418 Mora, we invested a great deal of time and money into remodeling and making the home what we wanted, a perfect place to raise a family. I would think if a bail bonding, alcohol monitoring, drug monitoring business were allowed in our neighborhood, much of the money that we have invested in that home would erode and dissolve. I would think that would happen with any home in the neighborhood. Part of the town code is to protect the health, safety, and welfare and property values of the neighborhood. If this business is there, that would not happen. Thank you.
You guys are here to decide whether the home occupation should be upheld, the decision should be upheld or you guys reverse it. And just a few highlights out of the home occupations. This is actually in the code. This is 16.20.070 home occupations. And the first thing it says is that the purpose of this is to protect the stability and character of the neighborhood and encourage neighborhood participation in the determination of a successful balance between neighborhood residents and home-based businesses. It's very evident that is not the case here. Item B of that states there shall be no visual appearance of the home occupation of the lot. That also is not true. Item five, and this is where it really, this is what I can't figure out how we've gotten this far. Item number five in that Purpose and Standards of Home Occupation states, "The home occupation shall be conducted by persons residing on the premise in which the home occupation is conducted. Not more than two persons other than the members of the family residing on the premise in which home occupation is conducted shall be regularly engaged in such home occupation. Residency shall be established by any standard identification or other documentation that proves that the person conducting the home occupation has resided at the site of the occupation for one month or more." They have to have resided in the home one month or before, before they can even put an application in for a home occupation. They've stated here that, I'm sorry, you guys, I thought I turned this off. Tell her we said hi.
I don't know how to turn it off.
So what I'm getting at is that they filled out this application for a home office occupation October 9th, 2014. They were telling us tonight that they still didn't have a CO, which if you don't have a CO, you're not supposed to be residing-- a CO, you're not supposed to be residing there. So how can they have even filled out this application and gotten this far without having even resided in the home? One of the things in the home occupation, this is something that they would have filled out when they filled in their thing, and it says, "The willingness of the applicants to meet with the neighboring residents and property owners." That has never happened, not one time. All they've been doing is basically trying to throw this in our face and keep on denying all these things that they're not running their business out of there. Something that has really, really bothered me is they have attacked my wife and I personally. They have filed a complaint with the Real Estate Commission against my wife and I, we were not even involved in this sale, and it was a bogus complaint. They said that it was a fair housing violation, Article 10 of the Code of Ethics for the Realtors, that we told them that there were no, that the neighborhood was for seniors only and no kids were allowed. And they stated in this complaint that my wife and I said that to them. My wife has never had any conversation with them. It's all untrue, yet I had to put in hours and hours of time to respond to this complaint. I also have here tonight, this is a police incident report, and this happened on December 4th, and can I give it to these guys? That incident report basically was, it was on the evening of the 4th, and I had, that day, this was after the letter that Mr. Bellis had given them to cease and desist, that day I had seen cement trucks come into the neighborhood, and I, early in the morning, and I was going off to work. And so later during the day, I got calls from several of the neighbors that he was pouring concrete over there without a permit. He didn't, it wasn't something he applied for. And so they also told me that he poured a concrete slab in front of this bridge that he illegally built. I happen to know Mr. Cunningham, he's the one that owns the property that the bridges, the land is built on. And Mr. Cunningham, number one, never gave him permission to build the bridge. He's told me that himself, I know Mr. Cunningham personally. I talked to Mr. Cunningham that day on another unrelated business item, and I had told him that the neighbors told me that they had poured this concrete slab. And he says he wouldn't do that, and I said, "Well, I haven't seen it, I can't tell you for sure." So anyways, I told him, you know, "When I go home this evening, I'll look at it and see if they did, and then I'll tell you if they did." You know, my wife told me and some of the neighbors did, but I didn't actually see it. So that evening I worked, it was about 6:45 or something, I headed home, it was slightly raining, and I was going by the house and I realized I forgot to look at the bridge. So I turned around and I was faced south, parked in the street. It was raining a little bit, so I kind of ran over, I looked over at the bridge, I'm on Mr. Cunningham's property, and I looked and verified that they had did indeed pour that. As I was walking back to my car, a vehicle came up the road, it happened to be Mr. Romero and Mrs. Romero, and she got out of the car and just started screaming at me, telling me that I was trespassing and calling me all kinds of names. And I just calmly walked back to my truck, and she said that I was trespassing. I said, "That land does not belong to you, it belongs to Mr. Cunningham." And she said some other things, and I drove off. She said, I could hear her yelling as I was driving off that she was going to call the police. About 20 minutes later, two state policemen showed up at my door, and that, the rest of that is in that report that you see tonight. So there are personal attacks against us, and it is not a neighborhood, friendly neighborhood situation since they have come in. We have no problem with them living there, but what your purpose is tonight is to basically decide on whether they should have a home occupation in that residence. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I had thought of a lot of things I wanted to, but I know time is, you know, we've all been here a long time this evening, and I just ask that you guys to really dig deep and think about what you are charged for to do up there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Baystall.
Sure.
You said that, I think you said that there is a visual appearance of the home occupation on the lot. What were you referring to?
There's constantly people coming up, they're always walking out and meeting them with papers. I mean, it's a pretty common occurrence, we've been keeping a log, a lot of the neighbors are keeping a log, and it's evident that people come up and they, it's, this is kind of a common thing. People drive up and they drive around the neighborhood because they don't know where they're going, they're just looking, and you're not allowed to have a sign if you're a bail bonding, you're not allowed to have a sign at your place of business is what I understand. Or, and for a home occupation, you're not allowed to have a sign. So people drive into the neighborhood, many times people have come into our, we live at the very end of the cul-de-sac, people come up and they have this bewildered look about them, wondering what's going on. Tonight, before this meeting, I went online, and I encourage all of you to do this, Google MTZ tracking. And just this evening before I came, I printed out nine ads on the first two pages of Google that show 404 Mora as a place for bail bonding and tracking. And they deny that they're doing business there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, guys.
Here's another one.
He's made a testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Who states your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Janet Conti, and I'm here to talk to you, not so much about the legal issues, because I'm not an attorney, but I want to talk to you about the personal issues. And that is my personal safety and welfare I am very concerned about since this business has started up. And especially, it was validated by Pavel Luks, and I'm sure you probably have a copy of this, and so I'm just going to briefly go over it. Apparently Pavel allowed Mr. Martinez to have his business very close to Pavel's. And in his affidavit, he stated, "My reasons for terminating his lease were multiple, but included the nature of his business. All occupants of 515 Gustorf, including myself, welcomed their departure. There was a busy, heavily-visited place at all hours of day or night by mostly unsavory characters. Some residents of this building were somewhat intimidated by the individuals lingering there. Even in our commercial zone, which contemplates professional offices, this Martinez business was not compatible with the rest of the professional services offered here." After I read this, it only, again, validated my concerns about my safety and welfare. What I want to talk to you about is the change I have seen in my neighbors and my friends about this. They are now scared, they feel intimidated, they are afraid to walk their dogs, they're afraid to go out alone. We have had, I personally have not, but they have had people peer into their windows, knock at their doors at all hours of the night. I have been spared this, but I am made aware of it. So the bottom line is, common sense should tell you that this type of business has no business, and not only our neighborhood, but any neighborhood. And lastly, I would just ask this of you, please make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask how many more are going to be coming up to speak? Okay, so, okay, three more, okay.
He saw this testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I did.
Who states your name for the record?
My name is Marilyn Granger. I have lived in Taus for 35 years. I've lived in this neighborhood for the past four years. I rent a house at 410 Mora Lane. It's right on the curve and makes a real convenient area for people who are looking for Mr. Martinez's business to turn around back out. So headlights shining in my living room window. You've heard testimony given about people's doors being knocked on. Mine was one at 4 o'clock in the morning. Obviously, I didn't open the door to see who was there. But my point is that just right where I live, there are four of us, single ladies who live alone, right in a row there. I hate to use the word elderly, but we are of a certain age. And being that way, you feel a little more vulnerable. I mean, what resources do I have if someone not only knocks on my door but is convinced that they're at Mr. Martinez's place of business and proceed to be more aggressive about entering my home? A home is supposed to be your safe haven. And before Mr. Martinez started his business, it was just that. I rent, I'm not a homeowner, I rent my home from Janet Berry, who lives at 408 Mora Lane. Janet and I have known each other 25 years or so. On the other side of me is Janet Conti, the other side of her is Peggy Stahl. Doug and Nancy are down at the end of the street. I have known Doug and Nancy practically all of my adult life, known their family. It was very comfortable, very safe feeling, but now it no longer is. And I don't understand why we're even here when the deed restrictions, which are current, are valid, clearly state, "No business shall be conducted in a home." My conclusion is that we are here because we are all being bullied. And I think that is wrong when it comes to the safety, well-being of your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
He saw this testimony about to give me the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
My name is Amy Romero. I'm the one who actually lives in the home with my three kids and my husband. First of all, I want to clarify a lot of things that were said here tonight that are basically misconstrued. Because I live in the home, I'm there all the time, every single day, I know what goes on the home. My kids are under the age of 14. I am a bail bondsman, yes, and it is a 24/7 job with ankle bracelets, they have sober links, scrims, yes, we do those. However, I have a computer, they are monitored on computer and cell phones. Technology has changed, you were 2014, and they don't not come to our home. I don't bring these individuals to my home because of my kids. I was born and raised here, I graduated high school, went to Denver, did school there. I was with abused and neglected kids for 11 years. Did business up there with cleaning, it was my own business up there. I started helping my dad in 2005 with electronic monitoring with these offenders from Denver. They were all monitored on my computer and cellphone. My dad would install the GPSes at the jail, I would get records and everything from the courthouse. That was never done at a home anywhere else. I did that for three years from there. The business got a little bit more active, I needed to be here more for court hearings, I had to do a lot of traveling down to different counties, so I had to move back here with my family. I left a good business in Denver to come to another good business to help out my dad. And I do run that business with my dad. I am a bail bondsman, licensed through the state, and I do get calls in the middle of the night from the jail, from family members, but when I get those calls, I don't tell them to come to my home. I go to the jail. And the reason we go to the jail is for several reasons. I have applications, paperwork that the families and the individual have to fill out. I go to the jail, they fill out those paperworks at the jail. I get documentations as far as pictures, background things, from the jail. I have to get those for state purposes, for licensure reasons, I do that from the jail. I get up and go there, they don't come to me. And when these people say in the neighborhood that they see cars coming through, and actually from August to maybe December, when we were doing cosmetic fixtures on the home, taking out old toilets, redoing the bathroom sinks, painting, those were our contractors coming in. People that saw windows that we had taken out, toilets, sinks, fixtures, even cabinets that they wanted. If somebody can have a better use for them, yes, they could take them. Those are the people that they saw coming in. Not people from the offenders or the families of the offenders, that's not who was coming into the home. It was contractors. And we had that from August all the way to December. We were living in a 30-foot camping trailer in the summer with my three kids, and I had to get this home ready so I can live there with my family. Once we got that home ready, and it was replacing carpet, there was nothing cosmetic done except a garage door changed into French doors, and that's how this whole thing got started. So blowing one thing out of proportion to another. I wish, I brought pictures here to see the home, it's actually a family home. Where I turned the garage, it's not no longer a garage, it's a family home or a place for my kids where they do video games, the other place is where I have my files and my equipment. That is kept at the home. The business is not run out there. I do it from fax, my cellphone, and my computer. The traffic that they say that they see coming back and forth, those pictures that they've submitted, and there's numerous pictures that they say that they have, these are my footprints, my husband's footprints, my kids' footprints, my dad's footprints, all this, and they say this is traffic. These are all from us. And the reason that bridge was built is because to alleviate this.
Because what?
Alleviate all the anger and the, you know, the complaints that we've gotten from the neighbors. When we got--
It's not, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's not for your personal use, it was just done to--
For the bridge, yes.
Yeah, it was not done for your personal use.
The, yes.
Yes, what, it is--
Yes, it is for our personal use, yes.
For your use, for you to go to the jailhouse?
Yes.
To the detention center?
Yes, and the reason for that is because from day one, when we got the house, we had the neighbors taking pictures of us and the family.
What's the parking lot for, then?
There is no parking lot. If you would go to this place, there is no parking lot.
What's the base course there, then, for?
What base course?
You have two, you must have 20 tons of, or 20 yards, excuse me, of base course stacked right next to the bridge, ready to be spread.
That is, you know what, it's muddy back there, it's, there's a lot of things that, you know, to walk back and forth, it's very--
So you don't intend for it to be parking?
No, not back there, no.
Okay.
When we put the sidewalk, everybody says that we use to put the sidewalk for business purpose, I can't landscape my home. That's what there was, there's a pond back there. I was told I had to get permits for those things. So when Mr. Bellis came to my home and said, "Amy, you need a permit for a sidewalk, you need a permit for this," I said, "You're going to tell me how I'm going to landscape my home? Where is that right as an individual, a citizen, where do I have that right to let you know?" When I had Motto Rosales coming to my house, he told me, and word for word, I wish I had recorded everything, he said, "Amy, write down everything you're going to switch in this house. Light fixtures, the plates on the light switches, if you're going to do flooring, what type of flooring, what kind of cabinetry, everything." I said, "Okay." Coming from Denver, I'm thinking, "This is protocol, this is normal." So I did that. I went room to room to room, jotting down every little thing that I was going to put on, because that's what Motto Rosales told me to do. I did that, I turned that in. I found out later, I didn't have to do that. It was all cosmetic. The electrical that we did was to replace old fixtures that were in there. Heating that was done is to replace old baseboards. Brown baseboards that were there before that had that cat smell, I replaced with brand new baseboards. What my frustration is, is that we've gone to the town to get the home, or the CO, so we can stay in the home, because winter was coming with my three kids. He denied it, he didn't want to see me. We got all the certifications from electricians, the plumbers, he wouldn't see me. He goes, "This is not my issue anymore, you're going to have to wait till your hearing." I said, "I got three children. I can't live in a camping trailer anymore. Where am I going to go with my three kids?" Well, he goes, "That's not my problem, I'm going to fine you the maximum, which is $300 I'm going to fine you the maximum, which is $300 a day." So when we got everything certified, signed by the electrician, the plumber, I took it to Mr. Bellis. I asked him to call me once he got these in. Never got a call. Called him twice, never got a call. So I took this a step further. I went to CID. I let them know the situation, what was going on. I said, "I need to move in with my three kids. If they're going to take me to court and fine me the maximum of $300 a day, so be it. I have my kids to take care of." CID came over to the house to inspect. You know what they told me? "This is a waste of my time." Because they caught a call from the city or from the town that Mr. Bellis said for electrical to find us the maximum and kick us out of the home and put up violations. He came to our homes. He said, "Amy, there's nothing here for me to look at. You did minor adjustments, you replaced plugs, light fixtures. This is a waste of my time." Now we have Martine Romero, which is the CID chief inspector from the state. He's taking over the case. Because he said, "Amy, you shouldn't have to actually apply for a CO because it's already grandfathered in. It's not a new build, is it?" I said, "No, it's not. No, it's not. This is what the town is putting us through." But we get the neighbors coming in and taking pictures all the time. Anytime there's a vehicle, they're taking pictures.
Sorry, if I can go back to what you said earlier. Are you saying that at no time in the future will you be having any clients or visitors or people of a business nature visiting the building?
No, we, no.
There will be no visitors to the building?
No.
And nobody needs the parking?
No, there's no, it's not necessary. Because we do...
Thank you.
The distance from the house to the courthouse is sufficient. And when they tell you that they see us with papers and my computer in my hand is because I'm walking to the jail in the courthouse with it. When they see a device in a bucket, I'm walking to the jail with it. That's what they're seeing. There's never an exchange of paperwork ever between us and an offender or a family's offender, an offender of a family, and myself. I wish they would take pictures of that instead of my kids and my family.
Chairman Maz?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Romero, has your business changed significantly since you were at your previous location?
As far as growth or as far as...
The nature of your business and the number of people visiting?
No.
So there's been no significant change?
No.
At your previous location, were clients visiting the office?
On the 515?
The, yeah.
On 515, I want to make clarification of that as well. When we rented from Pavel, he evicted us, but not the reasons he put on the affidavit, which are false. The reason he evicted us is because Sentinel Bank had a piece of property that needed to have those tenants move into another location. So our office was actually in one building. So we are taking up one office in one side of his building. So he thought as financially, as a businessman, it'd be beneficial for him to evict us so Sentinel Bank could come in with those tenants.
So in your previous location, clients did not visit your office location either?
They did, because it was, you know, convenience, we weren't that close to the courthouse. So it was, they did visit us there, yes.
If clients want to find you and research your contact information, they find an address to Moore Lane?
Well, we don't have that listed. So I don't know, I would like to see where that's listed.
Then I think we just saw copies of advertisements listing your business with that business location.
They haven't been made into the record. I would like to make them part of the record. And since I just found this also, the...
Mr. Caldwell, that's okay. I want to keep, I want to, you can have a chance to speak again.
I'll just hand it to you.
Thank you.
The other note, there was a perennial stream sources map for Taos County showing the perennial stream sources.
Thank you. So just for the record, I mean, you know, I searched on my phone real quick the business and Moore Lane comes up.
And I wasn't aware of that, to be honest with you.
No further questions, thank you, Ms. Ms.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Emily, on our line. There is a statement of findings that came out to us on the second or the third day in January. It says, "The residents have stated their continued intent to occupy the property, and this without a certificate of occupancy. An offer was made to issue a temporary CO to the residents for a residential unit in order to allow them to stay if the owners would withdraw the request to operate a business from this location. But the owner has declined that offer, and the decision of the town is being appealed." So you had an opportunity to get a CO and to stay in the house as a home with your children. Why can't he find another place to do his business?
The way, when that came up, when that proposal was done, we had came to Mr. Bellis many times to see what we needed to get done as far as paperwork, applications, things like that. And we always got the runaround, "Well, you got to turn this in." And then we turned that in. And they said, "Well, you didn't complete this, you didn't complete this." So when we, I said, "What do I need to do to get my kids in the home?" Nobody told me. You know where I had to get it? From the inspector in the city, in town, at the courthouse. I had to go and confront Dinah. I said, "What do I need as an application to get my CO?" He goes, "Well, this is what you need." I said, "Okay." I turned it in. Three times, my application was lost, couldn't be found. I got copies of all those. And so I think at that point, I was frustrated. And I said, "Why should I be threatened with either you live in the home and drop your business license?" I tried to work with these people, and it was a not, it was a circle. It was a nonstop circle. And I just got to the point where I'm tired, I was tired. I was trying to do everything by the book, because that's what I was known to be. Here is very political. I'm not used to that. My dad's used to that, I'm not. Come from the city, you follow the book. That's what we are known to do. So I came here, followed the book. But every time that I would turn something in, it's not, it wasn't what they needed or wasn't sufficient enough. So after doing all that whole process, it got to the point where Mr. Bellis said, "I could give you a CO right now if you drop the business license." To me, that was a threat.
Wait just a minute. He wasn't telling you you couldn't have your license?
Yes.
He was saying, "Please move your business to a C2 rather than a residential."
My husband was a witness there.
For.
He never did. We sat in his office, ma'am, and he said, "You drop your business license right now, I will administer your CO right now." That's what he said. My husband was a witness, and that's exactly what he said. And I just felt, it's not fair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one quick question. I wasn't quite clear on this, Mr. Romero, but when you've gone through the state CID, are they going to come in and issue you a CO if the town doesn't act on it? Or what did they let you know?
Yes. They actually, when I talked to Mr. Romero from CID, he actually called Mr. Bellis, left many messages. He got frustrated with that. He called Mado Rosales, the inspector. Didn't get any calls, callbacks from him. Finally spoke with Dinah, said that he was on two weeks vacation. So he took it at that. He called Mr. Bellis again, leaving a message. There was no return call back. So I called him, actually, my husband called him. And he said, "Mr. Romero, I'm not getting any calls, Mr. Bellis. We're going to give him a couple more days. If he does not return my call within those couple of days, I will go down myself, see the home, and issue your CO."
And has that happened?
No. He was supposed to come in last Friday, and I think there was a death in the family on his wife's side or something like that. So he wasn't able to attend or to come here.
Is that something that you're going to pursue still?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman Maz?
All right. It's getting a little late here, so...
When exactly did you lose your CO, the original CO that you got when you purchased the home?
Right. Honestly, I don't remember when we actually lost the CO. I was told that we had to put in an application to get a CO. And then I heard word from, even CID told me, "Amy, you've been grandfathered in. The home is not a new build. You should have already had the original CO from the previous owners, because it's not a new build." I didn't know that. So I was turning applications in to get a CO.
So essentially, you never lost your CO?
Right.
And you could reside in the residence because you're doing cosmetic work?
Right, exactly.
And this seemed like a bribery. If you drop the license, then we'll give you your CO.
Yes.
That's unusual.
Yeah. And actually, Mr. Bellis, when we were sitting in his office, he asked me. He goes, "How many cars do you have?" I said, "One." He asked my husband, "How many cars do you have?" He goes, "One." That's what we're entitled to have at our home, is the two vehicles. And I said, "I have four in Denver. And the HOA there is more restrictive of what we can have and cannot have." I said, "So he's telling me how to dictate how many cars I can have in my property."
Do you have a garage?
We had, we did have the garage, and we changed that into the playroom for the kids. And I, one half is a playroom. The other side is where I store my files and my equipment.
It was my understanding that that was where you did your business from, was the garage?
And that's what, that's what the understanding was, yes. And it was never done that way. I wish that you could see, I have the pictures to show that it's a family home. It is a family home, and my kids go in there. They actually enjoy going in that part of the house because we did put new carpeting. They have their video games, they have their bikes in there. That's comfortable for them versus the other side of the house.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Romero. I think we've, you know, we've addressed some of the concerns or questions that we had. I think there's one more speaker, which is your husband, I think.
Do you sound like the testimony you're going to give is the truth, the whole truth, or the other?
Mr. Chairman, Board, I am not part of... Oh, sorry. My name is Urban Romero III. I too grew up here, moved away, went, joined the service, left Taos, came back. But I am not part owner of this company. My concern is the home itself. I recently got an illness and learned how to become a stay-at-home mom. So I had to take over Amy's role on raising the family and taking care of our home. So that's what I did when we moved back here. I took over the home. I tried to remodel it the best that I could that in me and a friend of mine who was a construction worker from here, who retired, and he worked with my father for many, many years. So when we came in and we took over the home, we tried to build it to make it a home. Yes, we do store our equipment there, or they do. And they take care of everything there. But in all reality, it is a home. First and foremost, it is a home. It's all for me, it's for my wife, my children. When we tried to work with Mr. Bellis and Mr. Rosales, I said, you know, we found it very difficult. That's why we did have to turn to CID to try to find out what we needed to do, because we were getting no answers here in the town. We had to turn to the county to get help to try to resolve these problems. My concern is not the business, it's the home. You stated, ma'am, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but that...
It's not that one.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I know, I apologize. That he did offer us this, or he did, or that we could go and talk to him, or that all we had to do was get the final, once we got the electrical done. Ma'am, we went and turned in the paperwork. We were never told that. We were never given that information that this is what we needed to do. So when I did call CID down in Santa Fe, they stated to me that the home was an older build. It already had a CO. It already had everything that it needed. If you didn't do any more than 50% construction or remodeling to your home, you do not need to apply for a CO or have a CO given to you. So Mr. Romero is going to come down and look at our house as soon as he possibly can, because obviously, we don't have a building inspector right now. We don't. But when he does, he's going to see what we did to this house. Ma'am, you are more than welcome to come over and see our home. Any of you guys are. I'm not telling you you can't, because it is a home. It is. First and foremost, it's our home. But that's all I want. I just want to be able to live in my home in peace. I know that all this other stuff is going on, and I understand that. And it is up to you guys to let us run a business out of there, not run a business out of there. My main concern is, and I don't, I really don't know if it concerns you guys, but it's my home. Mr. Bellis could have gave us the CO a long time ago. I know that they were afraid of this 30-day thing because then after 30 days, we would be able to apply for a business license or whatever. That's fine. But we got no help from the town at all. When they told us about the electrical, we went to Dinah. We asked her how come we hadn't gotten approved. She said, "Well, we put a call down to CID for the electrical." That was it. Never, "We need a permit," never, "We need..." Sorry, Ms. Gonzalez, I apologize. I didn't mean to call her by her first name. So we had to call down there to them. That's when they stated all this other stuff. That does not really concern you guys. I understand that. But I want you to see where our frustration is coming from also. I understand how the other people there, you know, things are very, not very fine. Some of us, they are. Some of us, we still talk to each other. I know Ms. Conti, she was my teacher when I was a student in school, you know, and we've never had a problem. But the thing is, is that they were stating the fact that they felt threatened in their homes or intimidated. Never once have I driven in front of their house and taken pictures of when you've had friends over or your family, or even their construction workers. We have, we have people there that'll come over here and give you statements saying, "They were there, my friend is an electrician. He's the one who came over and put these sconces in the windows that we started this whole thing." Yet they were taking pictures of him. Why? I mean, there's no reason, rhyme or reason for everything. They intimidated us, and yet they don't see that. We see it. We see, every time a car goes by our house, we stand up and we look out the window to see if they're taking a picture of us. And they can laugh or giggle or whatever. They know it's true. Mr. Baystall knows it's true. Every time he drives by my house, what's he doing? You know, it's a public road. He has every right to. But I'm not going to put up blinds or close my curtains just because of that. I'm not hiding anything. I'm not trying to hide anything. All I'm saying is that you guys have a decision to make that has nothing to do with me. My decision is because I know Mr. Bellis is in here, and I want him to hear me say again, like when I was at the town meeting the other day. Help me. Help me to keep my family where they need to be. We bought this home, yes, because it was close to the courthouse, yes. But it was a home, and it is a home. Any of you guys can come and see my home, please. Except for Mr. Bellis. He's not allowed in my home, and he will never be allowed in my home. Because he can't tell me how many people can park at my house. He can't tell me who I can have and who I can't have over at my home. Because it is my home. Just like it's their home in their neighborhood. And I understand that. We're the outsiders coming in. Yes, we are. But it makes me upset. And I try, you know, I try, I wave, you know, I try to be nice, I try to be polite. But it's hard. It's hard. And they don't know me, I don't know them. Like I said, I know Ms. Conti. She was my gym teacher. We had a lot of, you know, as a kid. But it is my home, first and foremost. Business is second. So, you know, that's all I really have to say. And I hope they understand too. You know, I don't drive by their house and go look in their windows. I don't drive by their house and take pictures of them. They want to fight this, fight it here, right here and now. Don't turn in pictures to the planning and zoning saying, "This is whoever, this is whoever." You know, it doesn't make any sense. They could take pictures of footprints. We caught Mr. Baystall in our backyard. Yeah, he was on the bridge. He admitted to the police, he was on the bridge. That's our backyard.
Mr. Romero, thank you for your comments, but I think we, we understand where you're coming from, your frustration-
No, no, yeah, and I, I understand, I, I know my three minutes is up, and I'm not trying to belate anything, or whatever, but thank you for-
Oh, don't feel bad, 'cause there, a lot of, we went past the three minutes-
No, no, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you guys very much, thank you.
I do, I do wanna mention, and I, we've heard from everybody and, and- Well, I, I think that we've already gone presentations, well- Okay, thank you.
The exhibits will be, for the record, the exhibits, and the documents that were presented tonight will be attached to the record beginning at page 215 forward.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I think we, we need to, uh, close the, the public discussion.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think it, I think it would be appropriate to give both the, uh, appellant and the staff a chance to give some closing statements based on all the comments that we've heard.
I do just wanna stress that it, it needs to be in reference to what we're here for, and that is the home occupation permit. Uh, the, the other parts of what we've heard really doesn't pertain to this commission in reference to decision-making, so, uh, again, uh, I agree with what, uh, the commission is indicating, but limit your comments to those, to those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first exhibit I would like to present is a picture, um, which has the NOV on it from the town of Taos, from Otto Rosales, which includes his card and how to get ahold of him, and it's dated 9/18. Now, this obviously precedes any of the notifications, uh, where evidence is presented that business was still being conducted in November. The second picture I would like to present is the front of the garage, as to which one of your commissioners identified that if lathe work and exterior work is required on the house, and you can also see at the top of the door, on the left and the right, electrical work being done, that that requires a permit, and you can see the number 404 above the door. Converting to a commercial use is also requiring a land use permit. The next picture you will see is what I consider, in my 30 years, either as a planning director or a building official, to be a gut rehab, in which all the plaster, all the lathe have been taken off and stripped right down to the two V fours. This is a bathroom, and you can see that there's also, um, floor work and plumbing, new plumbing being put in, and new electrical. The next one you will see is a conversion of the interior of the garage into an office space, at which time I visited, and it was being used as an office. And if necessary, we can have Lieutenant Maggio, who was with me and accompanied me, uh, who also provided an affidavit in there, who witnessed that in fact, and it was admitted by the occupant, that the person at the desk, at the computer, at the calculator, was their bookkeeper, working out of this room. The next one I will show you is the removal of all of the electrical baseboards, and they were replaced with underfloor radiant heating. The next picture is also more gut rehab work being done, including the installation of electrical and plumbing. This is a lighter picture of work after completed. At this point, you'll see the installation of a new hot water heater with electrical, with plumbing, without a permit, either from the state of New Mexico, or from the town of Taos. The next picture you will see will include the plumbing and drainage underneath, as well as electrical and plumbing, which happened to be illegal at the time, and you can tell by the bend of it that it can't drain, which was done without a permit from the town or the state of New Mexico. The next exhibit is a notation received from Visker, Victor Escabal, who we were told, or the building official was told, was doing the electrical work, that a licensed electrician was doing the work. And a notation from him, that he only put in the outside lights, that you saw the two of those on the garage door, for Mr. Martinez, at a hundred dollars, the rest of the work, he has no idea who did that. The next picture, two pictures, show in the bathroom, that the floors were being raised, and that, uh, which if this was to be used for commercial purposes, would not meet ADA requirements, either in the size of the door, or in raising the floor. The next picture shows a fully rehabilitated, after the other pictures, new flooring, new sinks, new electrical, new toilets, new plumbing, and a rehabilitated bathroom. The next picture shows the installation of a door separating, as it was described to me by the occupants of the house, separating the business activity, which used to be the garage, from the residential activity, which was the kitchen, which was also rehabbed. The next two pictures represent the replacement of windows, and as you can see, as again was stated by one of the commissioners, that they were reframed, re-lath, and, uh, then plastered on the exterior. The last one, which unfortunately is very dark, is a picture of the total replacement of everything in the kitchen. The next exit, two exhibits are from the state of New Mexico Bureau of Licensing, CID. It was stated that when the electrical inspector arrived, he said, I don't know why I'm here, there's nothing to do, this was all minor stuff. Well, in fact, this is a correction, two correction notices, which indicate, after all the work was done, that there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven violations that needed to be corrected before the state of New Mexico would sign off on this. The next two pages you'll receive is a floor plan of the house, which has notations, which is standard by the building inspector, which after the work that had been completed over a period of three months, and three NOVs were filed, still remain to be done, and are filed as notes, and these were provided to the homeowner, indicating those improvements that still need to be made. The separate page indicates additional notes, and this is the list of what we were told was going to be done in the house versus what was actually done. In regards to the cars, Sterling Code 1620-07-0.3 Parking Standards, Section B reads, "And this is why I asked about the cars, trying to be helpful. Not more than one vehicle relating to a home occupation may be parked at any one time on the streets adjacent to or approximate to the lot on which the home occupation is being conducted." So if you've already got two cars, and you don't have any space on the property, and you're not making a parking lot, and you don't have a driveway, it's a very narrow street, if you have been there, and that's gonna create a fire problem, which meant, my building inspector, and I'm trying to save them time, if you're going to park cars on both sides of the street, my, my fire code inspector is gonna come by and cite you and say, you can't do this, you can't have this here, because the street is not wide enough, and it's a dead end on both sides, so they wouldn't be able to turn the fire engine around. Now, in regards to CID, yes, the answer, after all this, after everything was done and we were scheduled for this hearing, okay, was that they did not like the answer they had, so they went to the county, and the county, which I used to oversee the building department for four years, told them exactly what I told them, and sent them back to me. They didn't like that answer, so they went to CID. And yes, that's true, Martin Romero did call me, and it took me two days to get back to him. And the reason he has not come down is I explained to him that this was not a building code issue. The fact that there were no permits taken out, that no final inspection has been called for, that we were waiting for CID to get us the electrical, and as you can see by the thing I passed around, that there were still matters that were outstanding, that we could not issue a final inspection under those conditions, and this was a land use issue. Now, in regards to the, I didn't, first of all, I don't have the ability to take away anybody's business license, or ask them to give it up. What I said is, I feel really bad for you. What I would suggest is, why don't you do this? Why don't we reapply for the home occupation use, and I will get to it, there were several other suggestions I've made. And I don't want you to be without a house. If truly you're telling me that this is a residential purpose, and what you're describing to me is what they described here, then you really don't have a home occupation. There's nothing that says you can't have a calculator in your file cabinets, and your business books in the house. And we, we should just go ahead, and I'll give you a temporary CO, till we can get a final. Now, that temporary CO was while waiting for electrical work to be done, while they continued to occupy the house in violation of the code for months at a time, and conduct a business, we did not throw them out of the house, we haven't fined them. We could've done that, we haven't done that. In fact, this application is here today, and I'm probably in trouble, because I have let them stay in the house, and this appeal proceed, without them following what they were supposed to. Back in September, I met with the realtors before the house was purchased, and I said, you know, I'm not the planning director, unfortunately, we don't have a planning director. Let me look into it, and I'll get back to you. But I do know, for a home occupation, do not start rehabbing this house, do not occupy the house, until you get your permits. So for someone to say, I didn't know I needed a permit, five months later, the whole door, by the end of this, was plastered over and over again with stop work orders, is just a bold-faced lie. Now, I sat out there and said, let's find a solution to this, meeting after meeting after meeting. It was indicated to me, as it was tonight, that the activity is carried out at the county. I was the deputy county manager, one of my responsibilities was helping to design that jail, oversee it. Simple enough, I said to the homeowner, why don't you just get me a letter from the county that says you conduct your activity at the county, exactly as you're representing? I never got that letter, and I said, and this is all done? I didn't get that letter, so I sent an email, which I copied to the applicants, to, uh, Stephen Archuleta, the county manager, and he said, there is no way I would ever agree to that. Now, what do I believe after that point? Now, Mr. Martinez came to me, and he said, when the bridge issue came up, I'm buying that property. And I said, well, why don't you do this, that's a commercial zone right behind you. If you're buying the property, build a business there, put your business there, and separate the two uses. He thought that was a good idea. But then he came back with a proposal, that he wanted to put a commercial business in a mobile home, to save money. And I said, we don't oversee that, that's a state code, the state oversees mobile homes, and you can't put a commercial activity in a mobile home, it's not permitted. But if you can get a letter from them that says it's okay, I'm fine with that, and you don't need any approvals from me, because that's a C2 zone. We have tried over and over again to find a solution, and in each case, when I thought we had a settlement, the applicant has said, no, we're gonna do it our way. Now, the reason I didn't return the last two calls from the occupants of the house, is when, again, I can provide witnesses if necessary, we had a discussion, I was in a meeting, they just showed up, I took the time to come out and see them in the lobby. And what I said to them was, I wanna resolve this thing with you. How do we do that? So we sat down, and I explained the whole process to them, and in the end, that was when I made the offer about, let's get you a temporary CO, so we don't have to worry about the residential use. They said to me, how much is this really gonna cost us? And I said, I don't know what you mean, and they said, well, it says $300 a day. And I said, well, it's a range, it can be from a dollar a day to $300 a day, it could be nothing. I don't make that decision, at some point, this will come forth of a judge, and the judge will make that decision, and he said, well, we wanna know how much it is. And I said, I, I'm not in a position to tell you that, and he said, well, we wanna know whether we can afford to violate this, and continue to occupy the house and conduct the business, and it's just a question of what we can afford, if we make enough in the business, then we can pay the fine, it's no problem. At that point, and the attorney will tell you, if someone says we're now in a litigation, okay, and that started with Mr. Martinez saying, I'm gonna have you disbarred, and I thank you for thinking I'm an attorney, but, and, and, uh, Mr. Caldwell, and I said, well, I think you've got the wrong Mr. Caldwell, but, you know, that's up to you. Uh, our officials have been threatened, I've been threatened, okay? At that point, once somebody says, I'm suing the town, and that's what I was told, is I'm going to have your job, I'm going to sue the town, I'm gonna have you disbarred, I am barred from discussing the matter any further. As soon as it went to an appeal, and somebody is launching a lawsuit, I, I said what I have to say. If you wanna carry this conversation on, I will refer the file to the town attorney, and you can talk to him. That's the story. And I can show you, page after page, this is, this is the building file, so for people to say they didn't know what they had to do, there's note after note. At some point, yes, there's a statement signed by the applicant, saying, I'm doing this work myself, it's cosmetic, I am the homeowner, I'm doing it as a home builder, I don't need a GB 90-8, there's no electrical, there's no plumbing, and, I mean, clearly can see that's the case. Now, the state of New Mexico would not have signed off on the paperwork for HVAC, plumbing, and electrical, if they didn't think that work needed to be done. So you don't need to rely on me, but the last thing I will say to you, 'cause I know you have a long evening, is that if you approve the home use, and you read the regulations, you have to play, be able to do so with placing reasonable conditions, that you have a reasonable assumption will be followed, that will assure the safety and the compatibility of that activity with the neighborhood. My conclusion, after 30 years of being a planning director in all sorts of towns, was that if it takes me six months, and I still can't get compliance, even when I waive fees, even when I waive requirements, is there anything I can write that'll make sure that these people are going to follow it? And my answer was, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis, Mr. Martinez.
Before my dad speaks, um, first of all, I thought we were under oath. What Mr. Bellis disclosed to you, I wanna submit these if I could. What he's saying to you is not what was discussed, but I'm not gonna, it's petty stuff for me now. We're adults, I'm not gonna go there, but we were under oath, and I was hoping that he would be mature enough to be honest, those pictures will say everything. His file, this big, this is just one of my files. This is what we've been going through. And if you think that I haven't been following the rules, and doing the proper applications turning in, I wouldn't have this file, those files back there. I would have nothing. I do my homework, I do what I need to do, to follow the rules, or try to follow the rules as best as I can.
Do you mean, I'm sorry, do you mean you, you applied when you were supposed to apply, and you-
Yes.
Followed all the work orders, and stop orders, and-
When, yes, when we, when we got, when Motto came over to the house, and he put reg tag on the door, I know what that meant, to be honest with you, because I've never was confronted with that situation, I've never had to deal with that. Every time we bought anything new, it was in Denver, it was always new built, and we would move it right in. So when Motto came in, and he reg tagged us, I was, didn't know where, direction to take. I looked to my dad to give us that direction, what I needed to do. So I kinda let my dad take the reins for that, because I was lost. When things weren't getting done accordingly, and they weren't moving, I guess, efficiently, as I thought they would, I actually went over to Dinah's office, Ms. Gonzalez's office, she gave me paperwork, what I need to fill out, she highlighted what I need to fill it out. I went step by step, me and my husband spent two days going step by step, what we need to turn in. Notices, applications, this, that, finally, when we would go back, this was not here, this is not here, I don't have this, I don't have this, I finally learned to get received. I, you know, I could do that. That's how naive, naive I was, because I thought that they would be professional enough to follow the rules. So finally, every time I turned something into planning and zoning, I would tell Dinah, I wanna copy and show that it was received by your office. Because every time I would go in the beginning, for two months, I don't have this, I don't have this, we don't have this on file. But yet, I have the, I had the copies, I have everything on file. So I had to go ahead and have her stamp it, to show that.
Chief, can I see those, please? Sorry.
And the one that's dark, that's a little darker, is actually where the garage was, that's where my kids play, and I wish my kids would be in here tonight, uh, because they, they feel the frustration. When Mr. Bastel was in the backyard, my three kids were in the vehicle with me. I did have some words with him, because I was tired. My kids are tired, my kids didn't wanna be in the home anymore, because they see the type of businesses I do anyway, and they fear for me, because I'm out there. I deal with these people. I don't bring it to my home, that's what I, I would want my kids to express, that they're safe there. That they're, it's gonna be a good place to be. But when we see a neighbor, either taking pictures or in their yard, they panic, they don't know what to do, because it's their space, it's their invasion, they're being invaded by Mr. Bastel. I shouldn't have to deal with that in a neighborhood, in a town, in a city, yes, we're used to that in a city. We had alarm systems in my house, in the city. I don't have an alarm system in my house here. I didn't think I should need one.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, you have some comments?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I'm not sure, uh, how much time I've got, Mr. Chairman, but I, I'd like to make it as brief as I possibly can. Yes, please. I, I wanna to introduce those exhibits, uh, there's a, uh, a list of events where the Bastels have been over to the house, trespassing, harassing, uh, taking pictures from the backyard, and those are all his pictures, those are the evidence where he's been on our property without permission or authorization. And the things that Mr. Bellis, I wish, uh, what he was saying, I wish, uh, some of those words were, he would've been truthful. One of the, I had to go to the county when, uh, the last time that I saw Bellis, then he's called me about two or three times to be able to talk, and I says, you had six months to be able to engage in conversation. Nonetheless, the county gave me, uh, they told, they gave me a, uh, and I submitted that to, to, to Rick Bellis, indicating that I do business at 105 Albright Street. I submitted some of that paperwork, uh, because there is a criminal complaint, it's a public record, where you've seen, uh, there's a family back here, they occupy 4- four families, Mr. Garcia's place, four families, his wife, his two stepdaughters, his kids, all in one family.
Mr. Martinez, I, I think we need to
Okay.
stay away from the, you know, the attacks.
There's, Worlitzer has 432 and 434. They do a home business right there. They have the other place that the Basals run, the, the reservation resort out of their place, out of their house. And I can't run a home occupation where there's less, less traffic than any of those other businesses, so-called businesses. Mike Saxon has a construction company. He says, I'm going to do a business out of here. And those are the things, the, the monitors that were in place. And obviously, Joe Caldwell doesn't know, he hasn't done Bales for a long time, so he doesn't know pretty much what, how it operates. Neither does Ray Garcia. Those, those devices are certainly, that's how they function. That's how they work. And, you know, I ask that this board follow the code, the R4 that we're entitled to, give us the, the home occupation license. And we'll see how well we can promote that, that neighborhood. We want it to be safe. We want, I wouldn't put my grandkids or my children in, in one of those bad situations. And I ask the board to consider, to be fair, to be fair in what we presented. It's been, it's been an awful situation that I've experienced here in Towes. It's sad to say. And you guys are the ultimate body to, to be able to make some form of justice. But the rest of the, of the people that protested, I, I, it's, it's professional individuals that pretty much shocked me to hear what they had to, to present. But I leave it up to this body. You have that authority and, and to grant us the home occupation license. That's all we're asking for. And you can go out there and visit. You can monitor. You can send investigators out. You can do whatever you want to, to see that that place is safe for the neighbors and for my grandkids and my, and my children.
Thank you.
That's all we ask. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and paneling committee. Thank you.
I just want to share for all parties involved, there's still another appeals process, no matter what decision is made here. So we're not the ultimate decision makers if, if, well, one group decides they want to go to the next, the next level. At this point, I'm
Can I repute something that was, there was an allegation that I really have a problem with?
Well, you know, I, I want to avoid the, the personal attacks that are taking place. I mean, that's not what we're here for.
They did it. That's what, they were up there and they, they said we're running a business out of there. That is totally untrue. Pictures that he, I don't even know what pictures he sent or gave you guys, that he said, I took all those pictures. I never took a picture that I submitted to the town. So I don't know where that's
Okay. We're, we're just going to leave it at that, okay? We're, we're at the next level here. And I'm going to ask the, the Where, I've had a couple of commissioners that have asked to take a five-minute break. It's been a long, it's, we're as bad as the, the council now, I guess. But it's been three and a half hours. So we're going to take a five-minute break. We'll come back and, and the commission will make, I'll have some discussion and take it from there. So we're taking a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. At this point, we're at, at a juncture where I think that we want to see if there's any comments or feedback from the commission before we decide what the next course of actions going to be. So commissioners, any, any comments or discussion? And if not, is there someone that wants to make some type of motion? Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I would like to move for denial, for denial of the appeal to case number PZB 201435 with the following findings of fact. We have an appeal application that's incomplete and that includes both unpaid fees and failure to address the points of the original letter that denied the home occupation. Code specifies that the points are to be addressed. Further findings of fact, I'm suggesting non-compatibility with an R4 residential neighborhood. Construction of parking for the business, when the home occupation portion of the code specifically requires that parking must be contained on the existing site. Further findings, non-compliance with the requirements of the home occupation. I don't believe this use meets the definition as stated by one of our other council people. And finally, violation of the residential covenants recorded in 1991 and still in effect.
You've heard a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it and add a little bit of something. I really regret that there was not something said at the time that they bought this house, that they're looking at the wrong neighborhood. That is a residential neighborhood. The covenant says it's to be residential. They didn't want any home occupation there. I have to find the covenant again to read that. The neighborhood is listed in our code as having to be in agreement and supportive. I think that it would be a great home for the Romeros and their children. I'd like to see that happen. And I'd like to see them go somewhere else and get a business office where you don't have to go through all this stuff. You guys could have saved yourself weeks of frustration, I'm sure. But anyway, I second the motion.
There's a first and second. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, discussion, please. I would like to ask, the commissioner who made the motion, if he might consider dropping the requirement about enforcing the deed restrictions and covenants. I don't believe it's within our power to enforce those while we see a deed that calls for residential uses only. I think that we can take that into account and look at the sensitivity of the situation. But I don't believe we or the town have the, the ability to enforce that. Only the courts can enforce that.
Yeah. And I certainly wasn't suggesting enforcement. It was, I don't know, it was a criteria that I read in the staff report and received an update on tonight that I felt was important in making our land use decision. I'm happy to
I'm just maybe making too big a thing of it. I don't want to have another appealable event.
Right. And I'm happy to remove that from the motion if you think that that
Maybe the town attorney?
I was not seeking enforcement. I was simply stating that the deed restrictions and covenants themselves say that it can only be residential.
I, I would, I understood it just as a finding that there existed covenants that stated that the use is limited to residential purposes, but not that it would be in violation of those.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussions or comments? Okay. We have a first and second. I would like a roll call on the vote.
Chairman, if I may?
Before we do that, yes, Commissioner?
It's, it's always confusing when, when we have an, an appeal. So we're, the motion on
The motion, the motion is to deny the appeal. That's, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we vote, if we vote yes, we're voting to deny the appeal.
Correct.
If we vote no, we're approving, we're voting to just deny this motion is all, right?
Right.
So a vote yes is to deny this appeal. Just to be clear.
And maybe I should clarify this with the town attorney. If my motion fails, that doesn't mean that the appeal would be approved. There would have to be a second motion for approval of the appeal?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And by denying the appeal, I'm saying that you sustain the decision of below and which would deny the home occupation permit.
I call for the question. Commissioner Omero?
No.
Commissioner Pollard?
Aye.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Chairman Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Durham?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBay?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
No.
There's two noes, five yeses.
Okay, so the motion passes. Okay. Just to let the parties involved, those that might have, there, there's another process that you can appeal it to a next level, which would be to the town council, I believe. I'm not sure what that process is. I don't know, Mr. Lopez, if you know what that process would be for parties involved?
Ms. Gonzalez can explain it to her if, if one of them will visit her at the office.
Okay, okay. Next, next item on the agenda is matters from the staff. Is there any things in reference to the staff? Any, anything that needs to come up? Okay. Matters from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does anybody from within the zoning commission have any questions or any comments or anything they would like to bring up? Okay?
Well, quick question about schedule. Rick, do you anticipate a March meeting? Are there any Land use applications in the process or?
Yes, we do. We have the nursing home project coming forward. They were a little slow, so we couldn't get them on this month's agenda, but
Will that be informational or are they actually ready to come forward?
They're, they're ready to go.
Okay.
All the documentation is in. And I, I would report very quickly, too, that the council met an executive session in regards to the candidates that we had reviewed previously for planning director. One of the three candidates indicated that they would not relocate, so that left two. And I've asked for permission within the next week to hire one of those two. And they gave me permission to go ahead and do that.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question for, where are we as far as getting another code enforcement officer of the
We, we have advertisements out. We have two applications so far for a building official to do the code enforcement. The difficulty we have right now is that we require that whoever applies has got to be a ICC and state of New Mexico certified chief building official. And there are very few in the state. We've terminated our agreement with Angel Fire for our prior building official and have put in place the MOU that was previously there with the, at the county. So their building department and the letters went out to CID today. So hopefully in the next 24 hours, that transformation will go over. You'll still come in over here. We just send the paperwork over there. In the meantime, Julie Scancy, who is a certified building official, is performing all the inspections. I, I'm not doing it. I'm out of it, trust me.
Can I ask Rick a quick question?
Sure.
I didn't want to ask during the testimony, but CID is a state-level construction industry?
Yes. It's Construction Industries Division. And what they do is
Can they override the town if someone feels?
No. No. I mean, you could do a formal appeal through court to them.
Right.
But they would have to exhaust the process they're already going through. We have a construction board of appeals that hears appeals most likely you do. And in fact, I'm going to issue the final. The reason it hadn't been issued is that there's a note in the file that says, you have to call and get our permission before you come there. And on the actual building permit, it says, we don't arrange that. The applicant calls and makes that. So I'm going to ask their permission tomorrow if I can go and have Julie do a final inspection. Because I really don't want to hold up the residential use.
Right.
And now that you've ruled on your appeal, there's no reason to do that.
Do we have like a Chow standards for code that would be used along with the UBC when it comes to inspections? I know that New Mexico follows NFPA 58 with what we do. And then they have a New Mexico standard. You said that the state couldn't override anything through the town. Does the town have something officially for standards as far as with building and so forth?
Yeah. We use exactly the same building codes. Our code reads that whatever the state adopts, we have to adopt. That's the same for the town, the county. The only exception to that is that because we don't have an inspector for HVAC, plumbing and electrical, that they perform those inspections. We defer to them. And then, of course, by state statute, anything that's in a mobile home or a modular is inspected solely by the state.
Yes.
Rick, would you repeat what you said about the people we interviewed? Did you say that there are some possibilities there?
Yes, both candidates are still interested and we will try to get in touch with them and get somebody hired. Because Matt Spriggs, who we had hired, had stepped down.
Right.
But our, but our hope is to speed up the process. We'll also be doing some contracting with some of the former planning directors on specific projects, like maybe the updating of the code, so that that doesn't have to wait around for all of us to get through the paperwork.
Great. Well, next, next item on the agenda is
Oh, I have one more. We're not done yet. It's a sticky one, too.
Okay.
Mr. Bellis, Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis, I know, I know we're in the process of rebuilding the planning and zoning department. And I'm sorry, what was, what was your name again?
Mann.
Mann, Mann. What Mr., you know, what Mr. Mann had brought up in terms of the requirement for a building permit and some things that come by. You know, over the years, we've seen some really good applications come through in terms of whether it's a building permit, a special use permit, whether it's a home occupation, you know, whether it's a zone change. And I think over the years, we've really seen the standards of that kind of go down the drain. What, what even, even what was turned in tonight in terms of their, their, their documentation for what an application for a building permit was, isn't anything close to what's required for a building permit. So, you know, I, I completely agree with Mr. Mann. You know, we have, we have architectural standards that apply to districts. And we see buildings go up that, that aren't anywhere close to those standards. And we see applications, we see applications come across the desk which aren't anywhere close to what the standards are. And I know, you know, it's a fine line between, you know, when we have applicants come in who aren't necessarily design professionals and don't necessarily have the tools to fulfill those applications. We feel like we're doing them a favor by allowing them to come through the process. And I think what we saw tonight is that, is that we're not. And I think, you know, obviously, it's hard to do when we don't have a building department to enforce that or a planning staff to enforce that. But somehow, I think we have to get to a point where we can at least, you know, have an application that's complete, that fulfills the requirements that we've set out. Just a comment, so.
I, I don't, I, I know what you're referring to and I don't think that was the case in this. But I'm sure the attorney would kick me under the table and say, since this is a matter that's most likely under appeal, that I not make any comment at this time.
Understood.
Rick, just to add on, when we had our workshops and we had people coming in where we could just talk to them and they, the guy that had the Italian restaurant that looked like a commercial warehouse?
Right.
And all of us said, we don't like that. So he said, well, I'll take it back and work on it.
Right.
Can we do more of that?
That, that is our hope, is that, I apologize that the attorney and myself were tied up, not able to get here for the public comment. But it was my understanding that some of the members of the public probably made comments along that line, that in the southern part of the town, they wanted to see more of a transition or a better exterior architectural standard. And yes, we will be doing another workshop to, to address that. And I think that worked very well with the Italian restaurant. I think we have much more of a, where to be honest with you, legally, we really didn't have a lot of leverage. It's a permitted use. But they came back with something that has an adobe finish, that has some nice tiled patios. And, and I, I think that the neighborhood will be proud of. It'll look like something that is Towes and still has kind of a European flair to it, an outdoor kind of style.
Did they put the parking in back of the building? Or is it that the street?
The parking hasn't changed, just the lane, how the, we eliminated the drive-up window, which was going to create some traffic congestion problems. But whatever you see for parking is, that's
That's it.
what's going to be the parking.
Mr. Bay, any of that can be offline. I mean, we've been here already almost
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, it's fine. Do I have someone to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.